Welcome to the Durango City Council Virtual City Council Meeting for April 21st. Thank you all for joining us. We're sorry for the late start. It is a difficult transition as we all get live and online. So, thank you for your patience. We have a big meeting tonight with the election of a new mayor and a new mayor pro tem. So, we're excited that you're joining us. And we also have Executive Director of Trails 2000 joining us this evening for some proclamations, Mary Monroe. So, we'll look forward to that. And with that, Mr. Florine, may we have a roll call, please?
Absolutely. Counselor Batim?
Here.
Counselor Baxter?
Present.
Counselor Nozworthy?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Broke?
Here.
And Mayor Youssef?
Here. Thank you.
City Council, do we have any actual or perceived conflicts of interest this evening?
None. Here.
I'm seeing none, hearing none tonight. So, thank you very much. And with that, we will move on to public participation. This section of the agenda is set aside for the public to provide comments or ask questions regarding items that are not otherwise on the agenda. Public comment for our virtual e-meetings can be emailed or dropped off at the dropbox at City Council. And we are, we will, we will read all comments into the record tonight because we only have, I believe, around approximately five of them this evening. So, I will have our interim city manager Amber Blake read those for us. And we are still capping our public comment at three minutes. So, with that, Ms. Blake?
Thank you, Mayor Youssef. I will ask if someone can maintain a clock. That would be appreciated as I read. I do not believe I will go over the three minutes on any of these. However, to maintain the policy and process, I would ask that someone maintain a clock for me, please. Our first comment is from Regina Rourke. "I own shampoo, hair studio, and salon, and I'm wondering what the city's guidelines are going to be on reopening. Are we good to open on May 1st or sooner? Have a good day." The second public comment is from Timothy Nissler. "Open up all Durango businesses so our community can get back to work and our business owners can stay in business." Our next public comment is from John Simpson at 1831 Crestfield. "It is obvious that someone on the council or someone on the staff is inappropriately attempting to control the activities of Counselor Nozworthy and Counselor Baxter. Since their election, they have ably represented constituents by dodgily advocating for change. When individuals try to install change in an organization, their efforts are normally met with resistance from people who are entrenched in the system. Rather than hiding behind this policy, the city manager and counselors who agreed, should, agree with her, should openly discuss what Kim and Barbara have done that has ruffled feathers. Hiding behind the guise of changing policy is totally unfair to Kim and Barbara and to the citizens of Durango. It is possible that the majority of council will force the adoption of this policy. You need to keep in mind that your policy has no enforcement mechanism. And I think that you cannot, you can count on each counselor to deal with the public according to their own conscience. Many of us totally support what Kim and Barbara have been doing and would be severely disappointed if they allowed the majority to muzzle legitimate concerns. This is concerning, it is concerning that so much time is being spent by city staff and city council on this document. We are in the middle of a financial crisis without any plan to move forward, and the city manager is concentrating on this document at a time that she is arguing that there is not enough time to prepare and present financial projections. Although I am disappointed that you are spending so much time on this document, I am not surprised. It is, this is a document that gives the city manager more power while taking power from the city council. Three counselors believe their primary job is to support the city manager, who will act as the coach on a team. This document requires all communication from constituents to be shared with all. Citizens should feel comfortable in communication with an individual counselor to share ideas without the fear that many will be looking over their shoulder. Sharing all communication will result in a sharp decrease in citizen participation and an increase in face-to-face discussion and communication via telephone. It appears this document attempts to limit counselors' access to information, but the mayor will apparently continue to meet regularly with the city manager. You should keep in mind that the charter does not delegate special authority to the mayor. Each counselor should receive an equal amount of access to data and city manager time. This document puts in writing what has been occurring for years where the city manager is the person in charge. Council must support the manager, and both citizens and counselors will be attacked if you have a differing viewpoint. John Simpson." The next comment is from Dave Peters at 10 Kennebec Court, Durango. "Regarding the proposed city council working agreement presented at the April 14th study session, I have the following concerns. There are areas of the agreement I find to be arbitrary and in some cases capricious. Absent additional clarity, I am concerned that the document may lead to increased division between council members and also staff. I believe the underlying purpose of the agreement is to limit questioning and oversight of staff by council, which is not what citizens want. Constituents of Durango have voiced their desire for better financial controls and justifications on where their tax dollars are spent. In both the press and social media, citizens applauded council members Baxter and Nozworthy's research, scrutiny, and questions regarding the 2020 budget. This level of budget review is a departure from the past and understandably is not fully embraced by some of city councils' members and staff. Diversity in views and oversight should be embraced by city council. Unfortunately, several council members have chosen to attack diversity by making unprofessional remarks to each other. Now, more than ever, we need the city council leadership in conversations that are constructive, not coercive. At the April meeting, it was stated that the city attorney initiated drafting the working agreement based on notes from a retreat and discussions with some council members and staff. I find this unusual as government attorneys normally draft work products at the unanimous or majority request of elected officials. For transparency, the public should be able to view said correspondence. During the study session, it was ironic that Mayor Youssef stated this agreement would promote a healthier working relationship, yet I noted several occasions where she made comments directed to Councilmember Baxter that were derogatory. Accordingly, I am not convinced the document will lessen negative comments directed at council members. I think training on consensus building and conflict resolution would be more effective than this document. There seems to be an urgency by some council members to adopt this document, but I did not hear any compelling argument as to why discussions can't wait until the June retreat. What's really going on here? The city council urgently needs to spend most of their time providing or approving guidance to staff on spending reductions, agree on priorities for nonessential activities, and set near clear term targets for reductions. The council seems to be taking a hands-off approach, yet we heard Amber Blake ask for spending guidance at the April 14th meeting. The city of Aspen held a meeting three weeks ago where guidance was given to staff, and it appears they have taken action already. The media reports that they have already cut 55 part-time employees and now have projections that March revenue will decline by 65% with 50% declines projected through the summer." These comments will be posted with the record. There is one paragraph left on that one. And the final comment is from, I have to pull it up here. "Sweetie Marbury, Mayor of Durango 2014 and 2018, 2256 West Second Avenue. As former mayor of Durango, I want to applaud Mayor Melissa Youssef for an outstanding year of service to our city. For the last eight months, the city has faced difficulties and challenges unseen by former councils. Mayor Youssef, you have served Durango well with effective leadership and compassion for employees and residents. Congratulations for a job well done. I want to salute Mayor Pro Tem Dean Broke. As a 40-year resident in Durango, Dean Broke brings seven years of experience and wisdom to the council when he becomes the next mayor. Dean Broke served Durango well in the Gold King Minesville as well as, oh, as the face in Washington DC representing Durango. He has a wealth of knowledge in land use codes and as a small business owner understands the economic impacts on Durango in today's crisis. I look forward to 2020 Durango City Council in guiding our wonderful community." That's the public comment for this evening.
Great. Thank you, Amber. And everybody's on, I'm sorry, now and then we get dropped. And so, bear with us if that happens. So, we are moving on to proclamations and presentations now. We have one that starts with a celebration of Durango Trails 30th anniversary on Earth Day. And just to clarify for everyone and to make sure everyone's well aware of the connection, what we're referring to here in Durango Trails is Trails 2000, as many of us have known and been familiar with for so long. So, I'm going to start by reading the first proclamation, and it is in 5.1, a proclamation which is a celebration of Durango's Trail 30th anniversary on Earth Day, April 22nd, 2020. "Whereas outdoor recreation is a key driver of our economy and our community, and whereas all people, regardless of race, gender, income, or geography, have a moral right to a healthy, sustainable environment with economic growth, and whereas Durango Trails has partnered with the city of Durango for over two decades to plan, build, and maintain the area trails, educate trail users, and create connectivity, and whereas connecting to the outdoors connects our next generation of stewards to our public lands, and whereas our community volunteers and participates in a variety of events benefiting the trail network and the environment, and whereas Earth Day celebrates stewardship commitments. Now therefore, I, Melissa Youssef, Mayor of Durango, Colorado, do proclaim April 22nd, 2020 as a celebration of Durango Trails 30th anniversary on Earth Day, and I hereby encourage our residents, businesses, and institutions to use Earth Day to celebrate the earth, to support green initiatives, and volunteer for our wonderful trail network. And I will be signing this as the mayor, Melissa Youssef, and it is a huge honor. And just to reiterate, we do have Executive Director Mary Monroe with us today. And I'm going to let her say a few words after I say, read one more proclamation and say a few words myself. And this proclamation is from the state of Colorado, from Governor Jared Polis. And it says, "Whereas Durango Trails is celebrating 30 years as a nonprofit successfully enhancing Durango, La Plata County, and surrounding communities through its mission to plan, build, and maintain trails, educate and create connection, while educating and creating connections across southwest Colorado, and whereas Durango Trails has been greatly successful in working with area land managers, and whereas Durango Trails and their team of dedicated volunteers have collectively logged thousands of hours of trail network and stewardship, and whereas Durango Trails was recently recognized as nonprofit of the year, and whereas the state of Colorado recognizes Durango Trails for their incredible community support and unparalleled appreciation of outdoor recreation helping to drive local economies, sustain our Colorado communities, and protect the outdoor spaces that make the Durango area truly special. Therefore, I, Jared Polis, Governor of the state of Colorado, do hereby proclaim April 23rd, 2020 as Durango Trails Day." And then he signs it as the Governor Jared Polis. So, I want to just suggest while we have Mary here that for me, it is a huge honor to be able to read these proclamations, in this case, into the record virtually, but still a great honor as someone who absolutely cherishes and recognizes the value of our trails and our trail network throughout the community. So many of us use it every day. And I also want to thank Mary Monroe, Executive Director of Trails 2000, for her leadership throughout. She has been a collaborative, focused leader and bringing great value and such huge benefit to our community. I just feel so thankful to be able to read these and to be able to celebrate Durango Trails and Mary Monroe tonight. And I do want to also ask if our other counselors would like to add anything before I pass it to Mary. Okay, Chris?
Yes, thank you so much, Mary, and to your board and everybody who's been a member of the board in history over those 30 years, as well as what must be hundreds of volunteers over all of that time. I just want to send out a heartfelt thank you from the community for all of the work that you've done. Your legacy here is extraordinary. We experience it almost every day as much as we possibly can. And I just wanted to say how grateful we are to you and your organization for all of the effort and hard-won trails that you've created in our community for the health and well-being and economic vitality that we all enjoy. So, thank you so much.
Mayor Youssef, I'd like to thank Mary. 30 years, my gosh, for Trails 2000. I can remember when they were a fledgling group of trail enthusiasts armed with picks and shovels, and that's pretty much what Trails 2000 was 30 years ago. And now, they've, they are truly one of the cylinders of the engine that is Durango. And thank you, Mary, for your continued partnership. We couldn't do this without you. We couldn't maintain the trails. And we would have a big line item called Trail Maintenance if we didn't have you. So, thank you so much.
I'll just add my thanks to, to Mary and everyone at Trails 2000. All of Durango and the four regions we benefit from the vision, commitment, and hard work that you and your staff and all of the volunteers put in. So, thank you so very much.
So, I first let me apologize for disappearing for a while. The wifi is funky, so I moved. But I want you, you know, I told Mary this before, that before, even before I moved here, the reputation of Trails 2000 was well-known, particularly in northern California area where I was living. So, I want to say thank you, and you've lived up to the reputation, and I appreciate all the work that you've just done.
Great. Mary, would you like to say a few words?
I'm a little verklempt, but I will try to talk. Thank you very much. Those were outstanding, outstanding comments. And obviously, I pass on all the thanks to our board, to our volunteers, to our team members, to the land managers, to you, and to all our partners and stakeholders who have made our trail network what it is. It is definitely a team effort, and it's a huge team effort where people get behind the things that they care about and that they value. And we've seen over the COVID-19 that people value getting outdoors here in Durango, and the trails are the gateway to that outdoor experience. You know, I can't help but think of Ed Sync right now and how much he would love to have shared this moment with us. And to the people that came before that have made all this possible, we're standing on their shoulders. And to the next generation that now knows about stewardship and trails and are connected to them, I pass the torch on to them to be able to care for our community and our trail network. So, thank you so much from the bottom of my heart.
Excellent. Thank you so much. All right. With that, we will move on to our Census Committee presentation with Ms. Sandy Irwin.
Let's talk about the census. And my computer's wanting to run kind of slow, so bear with me. Why is the census important? First, for congressional representation. If we want to have accurate representation and represent the number of people who live in our community, the census is really important. This next one is the most important right now. Its billions in federal funding is dispersed based upon the census. If we're looking at the situation we're in with COVID-19, money that's being dispersed to communities is based upon census information. So, it's really important that we have an accurate census. The census also helps inform our policy decisions and is required by the Constitution. So, the census has had to make some adjustments based upon COVID-19. They are ensuring that they are protecting the health and safety of both the American public and the Census Bureau employees. They are following guidelines from the federal, state, and local authorities. They do want to ensure a complete and accurate count of all of our communities. And under their adjusted plan, field activities will resume after June 1st as they start returning to full capacity. So, those in-person activities, including the door-to-door enumeration, office work, et cetera, will incorporate the most current guidance from authorities to ensure that everybody remains healthy and safe. So, they have changed their schedule. Initially, the self-response period began March 12th and was going through July 31st. It is now going through October 31st. Group quarters counts, so think of group homes, dormitories. That was to end June 5th. It's now being extended to September 3rd. Something they call update leave. Update leave is when the census takers drop off invitations to respond at people's homes. And they'll drop off paper questionnaires to the front doors of people's homes. That was supposed to be happening March 15th through April 17th, and now that is going June 13th through July 9th. The non-response follow-up was to start May 13th through July 31st. It will now go August 11th to October 31st. That is when somebody will come to your home and ask you questions if you have not responded. And they are currently working on the service-based enumeration. That's, for example, that's for homelessness. They need to review that further and coordinate with outside partners, and they're doing that around the country. So, how do you respond? You can respond online by visiting my2020census.gov. The Census Bureau also offers different webpages in 59 different languages. And I'll show you a couple of screenshots here. These are the various languages that are available on the census website. And I'm leaving these screenshots up here just for a few moments so people can take a look. And if somebody is reading in a language other than English, they'll be able to see that that is available. You can also call, and there's language support when you do call in. Customer service representatives for English and Spanish are available every day from 7:00 AM to 2:00 AM Eastern Time. So, if you speak English, you can call 844-330-2020. If you speak Espanol, you can call 844-468-2020. And if you need the telephone display device or TDD, that number is 844-467-2020. There are also numbers for a variety of different languages, not all languages, but the ones that are listed here all have numbers that people can call in from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM Eastern Time on those phone lines. If this goes too fast, you can, of course, visit the 2020census.gov website to get that information. We, I mentioned group quarters before. Fort Lewis College counts their group quarters, so they have counted their residential students and faculty. Even though they were affected by COVID-19, they were counting the students that were living in the dorms. They do not consider their off-campus students. They are still living in households, so they would be contacted at those households, not through the campus. Yesterday, we did a little update there and see that the city of Durango's self-response is 53.5% as compared to the state overall at 54.5%. So, that's great. We're responding well. Everybody's at home. You can respond to the census. La Plata County is at 44%, so they're a little bit lower. A lot of the rural residents don't get an invitation in the mail because they use P.O. boxes. So, we would expect that to be lower, but we need to bring that up as well. So, if we're comparing those response rates, the national rate is 50.7. Our state's doing better than the national rate. And as I said, La Plata County is at 44% and 53.5% for the city of Durango. So, some actions of the La Plata County Complete Count Committee. We have had stand-up banners that have been relocated from library locations, which are closed, to local grocery and hardware stores. The Rocky Mountain PBS put out a video called Colorado Counts, and we've been showing that on D-Gov, and it discusses the importance of the census and the statewide efforts to promote a complete count. And over the first two weeks of April, the committee spent $5,000 worth of census advertisements that were purchased in the Durango Herald. My mouse, sorry, my mouse is not finding my screen. There we go. So, in summary, due to COVID-19, the self-respense response deadline has been extended to Halloween or October 31st. There really has never been a better time to respond to the census, either online or on the phone, right from the safety of your own home. If you haven't responded, it takes about 10 minutes. There's 10 questions. It took me less than that to answer for my whole family. Census workers are adhering to recommended guidelines for COVID-19 to protect the health and safety of themselves and the American public. Manual counts, such as those, the non-response follow-up, were rescheduled and will resume on June 1st. Response rates in the city still lag slightly behind the state. La Plata County is a little more behind, and we need to just bring all of those numbers up. And please, visit my2020census.gov to complete the census online. And that is it. Do you have any questions that I can try to answer?
Questions from counselors?
Doesn't look like it. Thank you so much.
Have a good evening, everyone.
Thanks, Sandy. All right. And with that, we will move on to item 5.4 with Ms. Kathy Metz, Animus River Trail North Extension, 32nd Street Crossing update.
Good evening, Mayor Youssef and members of city council. Give me a moment, and I'll share my screen, and then we can begin the presentation. So, what we wanted to do this evening was to provide an update to the city council on the Animus River Trail North Extension from Memorial Park to Animus City Park. The purpose of this evening is to review the bid proposals that the city has received on the current design and to overview the alternative alignment options that were suggested by city council and also to clarify next steps for the trail project. As you recall, you've seen this map at the last city council meeting when we talked about this. The overall project budget, $3.4 million. The city did receive four bids on March 24th of this year for the entire project that is illustrated in green on the map that is on display. We do have two bids that were under the total budget, and that's for the bridge that was over the Animus River, the railroad tracks, 32nd Street, as well as the spur behind North City Markets. And so, we are working with Loris and Associates OTAC in the metropolitan area of Denver to analyze additional alternatives for the Animus River Trail at the request of city council. And so, the three alternatives that are being analyzed by the consultant team are to look at the trail on East Second Avenue that would go basically from behind the recreation center all the way to 32nd Street with a bridge over 32nd Street. And then, the second alternative would be an underpass on the east side of the Animus River on East Third Avenue that would have a parallel bridge to the existing vehicular bridge on 32nd Street. And the third alternative, again, would be an underpass on the east side of the Animus River with modifications to the existing vehicular bridge at 32nd Street. And so, those are the three alignments that the consultants are analyzing at the request of the council. And so, if you go back to slide 5, it talks about the 2020 revised budget of $175,000. That, again, is for the consultants that are analyzing the alternatives that we just described. And of that total amount of money that was set aside by the city council at the last regular council meeting, $139,976 has been spent for the construction documents for the proposed alignment, and $35,024 is available at this time and being used by the consultant team to analyze the alternatives. The cost of the Animus River Trail from 1999, when the original sales tax was passed for the Animus River Trail and the record for the Animus River Trail and the Recreation Center in 99 through the end of 2019, the city has invested $24,698,000 for the mainline Animus River Trail spur connections um, and property acquisitions. Of that total of $24 million, the city has secured over $3 million in grants from state and local sources. Um, and so the final slide, really, we have, um, would be the, um, next steps for the project. We are suggesting, hopefully, when we're no longer in a Zoom, uh, format, that we can make a presentation to the City Council, perhaps at a study session, to go over in detail and answer council questions on the alternatives that have been studied for the 32nd Street Crossing to, uh, come up with the best, uh, grade-separated solution and receive council direction at that time. So that is the information that we have for this evening, and appreciate your time, and certainly happy to answer any questions at the council if there are any.
Thanks, Ms. Metz. Um, councilors, do you have any questions?
Do you have a sense of the, um, the design for the alternate alignments, when you might have information on that? In particular, with, uh, purchasing the property and doing an underpass, is there enough physical space to even consider such an option?
Yes, councillor Knowsworthy, the study and analysis is complete. We just need the time before the City Council to have that discussion.
Um, so could you, could you, uh, inform us right now if there's enough space on that piece of property to actually do the kind of ramping that might be necessary? Thanks.
There is enough space on the property that is at the corner of East Third Avenue and 32nd Street for a underpass connection for the Animus River Trail.
So, um, if that were the, can you hear me, by the way, because I had to change my audio?
I can hear you, yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, so that piece of property for the underpass, if that were chosen, do we have any restrictions on, um, when we might need to let the property owners know we were interested or anything like that?
We would need direction from the City Council to, um, enter into formal negotiations with the property owner. We do not have that at this time.
Okay. I'm looking at the pictures of councilors to try to see if there's other questions. It's so difficult. Um, but I, I think that I would just add, uh, that we will have further discussion at our next study session on April 28th um, about our study session calendar. Um, and I would, uh, I would venture to assume that potentially this item will come up, um, for council discussion at that time. Um, and, and that might be a great opportunity for all of us to talk about, uh, next steps and how we go about approaching this conversation. What do you think?
Kathy, I also had one more question. Um, before we discuss it as a council or the study session or whatever, will we also be able to see the bid documents, the four bid documents?
We have provided you the bid numbers in this presentation. If you want more information than that, we're happy to provide it.
Great. Thank you very much.
I, I have one more clarification. Um, you indicated that everything in green is the bid, but I know that the ramp behind City Market was an add-on. Is that truly within these bid numbers?
Yes, two of the bids that we received, the two low bids, were including the, um, ramp behind North City Market in the project cost. So the project numbers that we provided you for all four bids included, um, the main bridge over the river, over the railroad tracks, over 32nd Street, as well as the spur behind North City Market. So two of those bids, again, were under the 3.4 million and two were over. The bids that we received began on March 24th. We got from four separate contractors. And the first bid amount was two, 2.7 million. The second bid amount was just under 3.1 million. The third bid amount was 3.6 million. And the fourth bid amount was 4.5 million. And that was for the, all the bridge and the spur.
Thank you, Kathy. This is, uh, Mayor Yusef, I just want to thank you. And, uh, this is in response to, uh, uh, this additional inquiry and this additional design work is in response to the four public hearings we had regarding, uh, the input we took from the public, uh, over a period of time, uh, additional public engagement this last spring. And, uh, uh, so we allocated funds to pursue those, uh, those thoughts that were expressed by citizens in those, in those meetings. Uh, we can remind citizens that last, our last meeting, we did defer this particular capital improvement project and others. Uh, I say defer, not kill, as was represented maybe in a cartoon in the Herald or wherever, but, uh, in some public's perception, the, the, the bridge is in fact dead. In fact, it's deferred. And, uh, for no particular amount of time, I think we, uh, deferred it for a specific reason, which was to address the, the COVID, uh, impact. So we will be looking at this in a future study session, and there's no particular hurry. Uh, I know these bids are only good for a certain amount of time, but we're, uh, if we need to, we'll rebid, and we might, in fact, rebid another alternative. So, uh, thank you, and we look forward to having your next presentation.
Thank you.
Excellent. I just have one more question, uh, for Ms. Metz. You know, with our GOCO grant and, of course, the deferral of the project, do we need to be in touch with them, um, regarding, uh, a delay?
I have not been in contact with Great Outdoors Colorado pending direction from the City Council because I don't know quite honestly what to say to them. They certainly did send out an email to, that I received, that was generally to all communities in Colorado with active grants, as Durango has, saying that they understood that this pandemic is causing financial impacts on all communities and that they'll do their best to work with, um, cities such as Durango, um, through this situation. I'm sure many communities are facing what Durango is facing at the current time.
Excellent. Thank you for that update. And like I said, uh, we'll be talking about our calendar next week, um, which has been completely, um, upended, um, with, uh, with the coronavirus. So, um, we will be reconsidering our, our calendar at that time, and I'm sure we'll have discussions about this.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, then, I will move on to a review of the consent agenda, item number six.
Mayor Yusef, uh, may I, may I, uh, ask, uh, one, one, uh, agenda item? If we might be able to move, uh, agenda item 12.4, which is, uh, discussion and possible action regarding the working agreements, uh, forward in the agenda, so we can have a little more robust conversation, I would suggest that we move it to, uh, directly behind 12.1, the city update. And if there's, if there's opposition, great. If not, uh, uh, that's my suggestion for a response.
Okay. Um, so request to move, um, discussion and possible action concerning our working agreement to, um, after the city update and prior to the election of the mayor and the mayor pro tem. Thank you for that request, council. Thoughts on that? Okay, I will then look for, I get, I, I believe we're probably going to need a motion, um, to move an agenda item, Dirk, correct?
Madam Mayor, I would make a motion to, uh, move 12-point, item 12.4 on the agenda to follow item 12.1.
Do we have a second?
I can say.
Council discussion? Okay, Mr. Florine, may we have a roll call, please?
Councillor Bettin?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brookie?
Yes.
And then councillor Knowsworthy?
Yes.
Councillor Baxter?
Yes.
And Mayor Yusef?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Brookie. And with that, we'll move on to the review of the consent agenda. Um, this portion of the agenda is to allow City Council by a single motion to approve items that are otherwise considered routine, um, or non-controversial. And there will be no separate discussion of these items unless a councillor requests that an item be removed. Councilors, do we, um, oh, first, Mr. Florine, will you please read our consent agenda items for us?
Items 6.1 and 6.2 are approval of minutes. 6.1 is from the study session on March 10th, 2020. 6.2 is for the regular meeting on April 7th, 2020. And then item 6.3 is discussion and possible action concerning a resolution authorizing a supplemental appropriation to provide for settlement of the 2,000 flattened annexation agreement.
Thank you. Do we have any councilors that would like to remove an item from the consent agenda this evening? Seeing none, I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Further discussion? No, no discussion. Mr. Florine, may we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Pro Tem Brookie?
Yes.
Councillor Bettin?
Yes.
Councillor Knowsworthy?
Yes.
Councillor Baxter?
Yes.
And Mayor Yusef?
Yes. Okay, and with that, then, we will move on to our public hearings. We have one public hearing this evening. It is a quasi-judicial hearing to consider the granting of an easement to Atmos Energy to install a gas line under Chapman Hill to service the Riverview neighborhood. These quasi-judicial judicial hearings are opportunities for the public to provide formal input into the City Council's decision-making process. We welcome all public testimony for our, um, public hearings. And given the virtual nature of, of our meetings, we did ask that residents, uh, submit comments in advance by email or by Dropbox to City Hall, um, including their name and address. The structure for our hearing tonight, we will have staff present the staff report. We will open the public hearing. We will have a presentation from the applicant or developer, if applicable. Um, and we will have public testimony if there are any, um, individuals that want to comment. We will close the public testimony, questions from council at that time, and I'll ask council to wait to ask for questions until this time in the agenda. We'll get a response from city staff and the developer, if appropriate, and then we'll have a motion from council. So with that, can we have a staff report, please?
Sure. Good evening, councilors. Kevin Hall, Assistant City Manager. Can everyone hear me okay? Great. Uh, pretty straightforward issue here tonight, uh, as we've done a couple of times in the past. Uh, when we've offered up easements across city property, we need to go through the process of a public hearing and ordinance, uh, process. In this case, Atmos Energy is, uh, interested in replacing a service line that, uh, feeds the Riverview neighborhood, uh, down Chapman Hill. City staff, including Parks and Rec, has worked closely with Atmos to come up with the easement agreement that you have attached in your agenda doc. Um, it's essentially replacing what is a problematic line for Chapman Hill because the one that's there now is, uh, shallowed up. This one will replace that. So, uh, we've worked closely with them on, uh, some benefits to the city as well. So, uh, this process before you tonight is essentially to have a public hearing and then, uh, direct the, the city attorney to establish an ordinance for future reading. We do not have any public comments. We do not have an applicant presentation. So, um, with it, I said, uh, as Mayor Yusef pointed out, we need to open the public hearing, recognize there is no, uh, public comments, close that, and then take action based on the recommendation within the staff report. And, and that essentially is the, the staff report from me.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, and thanks for the direction. Then with that, I will open the public hearing. Um, do we, did you suggest that we had any presentation from the applicant or developer?
There is not.
Okay. And I, did I hear you correctly that we have no public testimony?
That is correct.
Okay, then I will close the public testimony, um, and we will ask council, um, if we have questions for staff at this time. Chris Bettin?
Just one quick question, Kevin. Uh, I assume that we've, uh, looked at this easement relative to future development plans for that area, and it doesn't impede upon our ability to do anything that may have been proposed or in the works for, for the future.
Sure, that's a good question, and my understanding is, uh, the replacement of this line actually improves opportunities for future changes. In fact, with the installation of a line, there will be, uh, some regrading done that is of benefit to the ski hill itself. And I believe the depth of burial will also, uh, be improved from what it is now. So, uh, I don't know of any specific development proposals that are being directly impacted by this other than the benefit of the line replacement itself.
Further questions from council? And any further response from staff? Okay, I will close the public hearing, and I will seek a motion or a, a motion from council.
Uh, Mayor Yusef, I would make a motion for, uh, to direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance for proceeding at the next regularly scheduled City Council meeting, authorizing and granting the proposed easement to Atmos Energy to install a new gas line to service the Riverview neighborhood.
Second?
Who said that first? Let's say, let's say councillor Baxter.
I think I did.
Okay, we'll, we'll confirm that councillor Knowsworthy seconded that.
Further discussion from council? Seeing none, may we have a roll call, please?
Councillor Knowsworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brookie?
Yes.
Councillor Bettin?
Yes.
Councillor Baxter?
Yes.
And Mayor Yusef?
Yes. Great. Okay, moving on to item number 11, introduction of ordinances, and I will turn it over to you, Dirk.
Okay, good evening. I apologize, Ben. I didn't get the, uh, ordinance number prior to, to the meeting from you, but this will be the ordinance 2020 in the next series of ordinances. I don't know what the number is.
This is ordinance number one.
Okay. Um, so this is an ordinance to approve the lease with the Four Corners Gym and Mineral Club, uh, it within, um, Brookside Park. So the charter requires an ordinance to approve any lease of city property. This was, uh, subject to a hearing at the last meeting. The proposed lease, uh, is attached. It's a ten-year term. Uh, describes the location and the details. So, again, this is a standard form lease that we use on a similar situations when we lease property to an entity such as Four Corners Gym and Mineral Club. Uh, that's about all I have to say unless people have questions about that.
Well, I'd be happy to make a motion if we're ready.
I'm ready.
Um, so I would make a motion to authorize a lease between the city of Durango and the Four Corners Gym and Mineral Club at Brookside Park, uh, ordinance number 2020-1.
I'll second.
Further discussion from council? All right, may we have a roll call, please?
Councillor Bettin?
Yes.
Councillor Baxter?
Yes.
Councillor Knowsworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brookie?
Yes.
And Mayor Yusef?
Yes. Great. Go ahead, Dirk.
Uh, so the next item is the ordinance, uh, uh, amending chapter 23 of the Court of Ordinances of the city of Durango to adopt and incorporate standardized definitions in the code related to imposition of, uh, sales and use taxes and declaring an effective date. So this would be ordinance 2020-02. This is, um, the completion of an effort that started some time ago by a variety of cities in coordination with the municipal league to attempt to bring all of the sales tax definitions into as uniformity as possible so that, uh, out-of-state and internet sellers can, um, simplify the reporting and payment of taxes. This becomes particularly important under the Wayfair, uh, this is Supreme Court decision so that we can begin to align processes to maximize our efforts to collect sales tax from out-of-state and internet, internet sellers. So these, it contains a, uh, reworking of a number of So these, it contains a, uh, reworking of a number of the sales tax definitions again to bring them into, uh, uh, alignment with other cities. Uh, and it also takes steps to incorporate those and certain exemptions into the code. Uh, so this ordinance has been prepared, uh, to do exactly that. And there may be continuing efforts moving forward to further enhance efforts to collect sales taxes under the Wayfair decision. But this is step one, uh, and we may be back with others, uh, as they become, uh, other efforts, uh, to coordinate collection efforts across the state without sacrificing their home rule authority to impose and collect our own sales and use taxes. I'd be happy to try to answer questions if not, uh, uh, again, I think a motion is in order to approve it.
Dirk, do you have?
Thank you, Dirk.
Your list?
It would be, based on the last one, it would be O two, so it would be twenty twenty, uh, dash O two.
So Dirk, I just wanted to say thank you for moving us along, at least on the first step, if not further, and I think that's a, it's a great thing to do because those internet sales tax will be incredibly important in the future, particularly given the situation that we're now in with the COVID virus.
Absolutely.
Yes, yes, thank you. It was like, looks like a lot of work pulling this together, being in alignment. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Dirk. Yeah, we've been talking about this for a long time and, and, uh, yeah, finally got down, boiled down to words, and, uh, thanks for being the author of the, uh, something precarious in the future very nicely. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to adopt, uh, uh, ordinance, uh, zero dash twenty twenty dash twenty, or O two. Twenty twenty dash.
I'll second. I'll second that.
Thank you.
Further counsel discussion? May we have a roll call, please?
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Broke?
Yes.
Counselor Batine?
Yes.
Counselor Noseworthy?
Yes.
And Mayor Youssef?
Yes. All right, with that, moving on to, um, administrative, um, interim city manager reports, city update with Amber Blake. You're on mute, Amber.
Thanks. Good evening, Mayor Youssef and the city council. So this evening I have an update for all of you. Um, I'd like to begin with, um, requesting some guidance from counsel on five five. So at our next council meeting, I'm hoping that counsel can provide me with guidance related to cost saving measures that you would like to apply for your appointees. Um, this is just a heads up to the council, and I'm hoping that this will be included in the conversation that we hold next week with the study session on four twenty-eight to review our COVID nineteen response plan, um, and ask for counsel guidance on that plan next Tuesday. Next Tuesday during the study session, we will also be reviewing our study session calendar. So if you can please come prepared for items that you would like to see, um, in the near future on that, um, study session calendar, we will be preparing a recommendation to review with counsel on that as well. Um, the four thirty boards of county commissioner and city council meeting agenda items, I've worked with, um, county manager Chuck Stevens, who queried his board, and I have queried all of you. And the four items that we looked like we had consensus on, um, that will definitely fill up the two hour meeting that we will be having via, uh, virtual setting, um, next Thursday. Our impacts of COVID nineteen on the city of Durango and La Plata County budget in twenty twenty. Joint sales tax and the impacts to the senior center and the library related to revenue shortfalls. Economic recovery planning for the city of Durango and La Plata County. And then we will be inviting, um, Leanne Jalon on for a public health update. If she's unable to join us, we will be providing a public health update um, regarding testing information, medical surge preparations, effects of social distancing, and the stay at home or new stay safer at home orders. Um, and whatever additional highlights, uh, are ready at that point in time. Staff has prepared, um, a letter to Governor Polis. I sent the council earlier today a new draft of that letter, which really emphasizes, um, thanking him for his leadership during this time as well as requesting, um, a distribution formula um, to be worked out by the state to help with the distribution of the CARES Act funding for small and rural municipalities, um, and counties. And I'm looking to see if counsel has consensus on whether or not you would like the mayor to sign that letter. Um, we did hear back from the Colorado Municipal League today that, um, a letter of that nature is still something that would be supported and helpful. Um, and then I would like to move into another couple of updates here focused on, um, upcoming projects that the council has in front of them, as well as our economic stabilization and recovery updates. So at the council meeting on May fifth, staff is preparing all of the documents for counsel to hold a public hearing and vote on the formation of the urban renewal authority. So we will be moving this forward with counsel or asking you to move forward the formation of the urban renewal authority on May fifth. And prior to the public hearing, staff will be providing a presentation on the U R A and the importance for Durango's economic recovery and resilience. Um, so really the timing could not be better for the formation of the U R A, and it also moves forward council goals. Um, the city's contracted U R A attorney, Paul Benedetti, will be on the line during that call to answer technical or legal questions. And staff will also be providing more detailed U R A public head, hearing agenda documentation for, um, the council prior to that meeting. And then I would like to say that should counsel decide to move forward with establishing the, uh, the U R A, community development staff will begin working with the U R A board and outside partners to initiate the urban renewal pro- process. So we are ready to hit the ground running on that once, um, council makes a decision, should you choose to move in that direction. Related to economic stabilization and recovery, I would like to provide city council with an update on the La Plata Economic Recovery Task Force. This task force is made up of representatives from dozens of organizations throughout the region, including city and county staff. And that task force has been meeting two to three times a week since the virus outbreak, um, and the closure orders went into place. The task force has accomplished a lot over the last six weeks, including hosting two seminars on federal assistance for small business owners, creating an easy to use playbook on the federal stimulus programs, which was forwarded to city council to help share to your constituents, uh, a couple of weeks ago. And then created an outline, an online clearinghouse of information, um, at the southwest C O D A dot org website. Um, they've also organized and launched trainings for small business owners on positive ways to use this downtime and have suggested policy actions to both the city and the county, um, for moving forward. And have served as a conduit for local business owners to receive information. So that was the last six weeks. Moving forward, the task force is focusing on stabilization and recovery efforts. Um, all of these efforts will fall in line with Governor Polis's framework. And as the public health directive has changed, this group will be disseminating information on how local businesses can adapt and thrive in this new environment. So there was a kickoff meeting last Wednesday, and Counselor Noseworthy and Counselor Baxter did participate in the larger task force, um, on this kickoff meeting. And that group will be coordinating a number of subgroups related to specific sectors of the economy. And we think that this would be a great opportunity for more people, including city council members, to be involved as part of the working task force. So I will be sending all of this information out to the council as well, but I'd like to make sure that the public knows what the sectors are and where we are. So what we'll be asking for counsel, um, to do is identify one of the following areas that are sectors that the task force will be working on, and then we can work to ensure that each council member has a different task force, so we can spread out the resources. Um, and then we'll be coordinating back with you about when those meetings are. So the areas of focus are citizens, restaurants, manufacturing, retailers, including marijuana and liquor, services, including healthcare and professional services, lodging and second homeowners, recreation, resorts, attractions and guides, education and early childhood care, construction, development and real estate, nonprofits, events, churches and assemblies, and agriculture. So those are the subsections that we're looking at, and we want to make sure that you also know that to cut down on the number of groups, um, they may be combined. So if you could please put down the items that you're interested in, um, we will get back with you about the subgroups. Um, and then finally, a community campaign is being developed to dra- to encourage the entire community to rally together to support the local businesses and institutions during the long term recovery phase. And more of that information will be shared with counsel and the public via these updates as it becomes available. And then finally, um, another opportunity that's part of our recovery is Aid to All. So we mentioned this, we've talked about this a little bit previously in the study session. Um, but Matt Taylor, recently retired leader of World Pay, is working with a team of data and product experts to build a grant program for small businesses and workers in La Plata County. And these grants are designed to fill the gaps where federal and state assistance is not sufficient. So this program, which was known as Aid to All, will be funded through public and philanthropic donations and will include crowdfunding donations, enabling ordinary citizens to donate to the program as well. Um, the parameters of the program are still being worked out, so as we learn more and it's ready to hit the ground running, we will share the information with counsel and the public. Um, but only businesses and workers in La Plata County are eligible for the program. Um, so we would like to make sure that the council is aware of this, the public is aware that a group of individuals, uh, is being led by Matt Taylor to get this off the ground and running to provide an additional resource that is much needed for our community members, um, and members of La Plata County. So we're hoping, uh, he's hoping to launch Aid to All, um, the website and application portal on May first and begin distributing grants three to four weeks after that. So this is a very quick turnaround. And the application is seeking important data and references to provide assistance transparent, transparently and legitimately. Aid to All is seeking formal donations in the next few weeks, so please stay tuned if you have the resources to give. Um, and the city, I would like to discuss this again next week, but I'm going to put it out there for you all to ruminate over, over the next week. But we have forty thousand dollar budgeted for grants aimed at local businesses in the current twenty twenty budget through the Community Development Department. And staff's recommendation in looking at the return on investment for those funds and ensuring that they go for the original intended purpose to Durango businesses as well as fitting the need to help support the businesses, um, in Durango. We're recommending that this forty dot thousand dollars be, um, re-appropriated to the Aid to All program, um, to leverage local philanthropic donors. So we can provide additional information again next week, and once the program is taking applications, um, so probably the meeting in May, we will have more information for a council and the public. And then my final, um, item is that we posted after the last meeting, we posted our, um, financial management reports for January and February. March will be up soon, and we look forward to the discussion next Tuesday. Um, so, thank you, and that's what I have for this evening.
Thank you very much, Amber. We appreciate it. That was a big update. You know, you've been.
Amber, I have a question for you on your last item. Um, those reports for January, February, and soon to be March, um, do they include budget to actuals for revenue and expenses in all funds?
We are not at the point where it's meeting the criteria that you and I had discussed. We're still working through that process. Um, I am moving towards a weekly report um, for budget to actuals and actual cash that comes into the bank, so what our deposits are. Um, and can be reporting on those to you weekly. The reports were not finished for me to provide to you today, um, and if they are ready tomorrow, I will be emailing them out to counsel.
Will we have, um, current financial situations, so the last quarter's information before we have our meeting on Tuesday?
I am hopeful that we will, but I have, I don't have Devin next to me to be able to provide you with confirmation on that.
Thank you. I'm just concerned that when we, uh, look at going forward, what kind of cuts we might need to make, or what impacts we're going to have on the revenues, that if we don't know where we stand today, it's really hard to forecast where we might need to go in the future, so.
We intend to have all of that information for you prior to the meeting on Tuesday, um, so that we can have a robust discussion for what we need to move forward with, um, both first phase and future phases to address the current situation.
Okay, thank you. And the other question I had was, your first comment was, um, something to do with direction to city council employees about um, their finances in their departments. And I'm wondering if city council should be asking ourselves, um, and our appointees what they would recommend as far as possible cuts, um, given what their funding is through the general fund.
Yes. So, um, I will be making a recommendation, um, that is consistent with what I'll be recommending for the rest of the organization for the appointees. However, um, I am not in charge of myself, so I work for all of you, and so does Dirk, and so does the judge. So I felt that it was important that the council, um, have the opportunity to provide additional feedback in terms of cost saving measures, um.
Well, exactly, and that's what I was asking, was whether or not that was our responsibility to have that conversation with the appointees and not yours. But if you've had a conversation, um, and what you're recommending is in line with what they think is possible, that's probably right.
Yes. So we did, we have had, um, conversations, Dirk and myself, um, and Dirk and the judge. And so we are all in line with, um, what we are would recommend, and then we're ready to talk to you. So if any of you would, um, I feel like it would be an appropriate conversation to be held in the public setting. So having all five of you with, um, us at the table would be the best way to have that conversation. Um, but I'm happy to have additional conversations specifically about whatever your questions are for me. I'm happy to have those conversations if that helps you prepare for the meeting on the twenty eighth.
I'd like to add, and Counselor Baxter is correct, and that, uh, you know, city manager will be bringing forth op- op- options, I s- assume, uh, or a strategy for any reductions or possible actions regarding the, uh, employee base as a whole, and, uh, that clearly three appointees being the city manager, the judge, and the city attorney are in fact the city council's purview. So, uh, and there, you know, I think once we understand what the, what the, what the overall strategy is, then we can, uh, make appropriate strategies for those three appointees as counsel.
Sounds like a good plan. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Um, further questions for Amber in her update?
Yeah, Amber, I think you need, uh, consensus for going forward with the letter from the mayor. So I support that.
Thank you.
Yeah, that, that's, thank you, Barbara. Uh, yeah, you know, there was a, uh, th- things are happening so quickly that the revision of that letter, I think, was appropriate. I do think, uh, I got a call from Senator Quorum, who said he just talked to the governor, and our fears were uh, that we weren't going to get any cut part of that as a municipality, a small municipality under five hundred thousand uh, people, that it was in fact not the governor's intent to usurp that money from distribution to communities like ours, uh, which was the basis of this letter and request. So uh, I think at this point, with that commitment from the governor, we can thank him and, and send out that letter.
Thank you, Dean, for clarifying that. I, I appreciate that because that's important information, and, uh, I think the letter is good. I like the idea that we show appreciation. I like the idea we present our challenges, and we make an ask. I think that's wonderful.
And, and there will be another round. So, and this, uh, it's really important that this ask, uh, uh, is not, uh, does not allow us to backfill lost sales taxes. Uh, this, uh, this, if, if we are successful in getting any amount, uh, uh, brought to us via the state, this is federal money through the state distributed by essentially the governor. Uh, it cannot be, uh, from, from the federal standpoint, it's limited not to be able to be used for our sales tax loss. So we can use it for special projects for other, uh, other COVID related issues that we are impacted by, but we can't use. but we can't use it for just simply a loss of income relative to sales tax. That will be the next round. And so we need to be aggressive about being able to, and that was, we had a discussion last week, that will be the competitive part and we'll be right in there with every other community in the state of Colorado for, for those funds. And hopefully there will be a little bit more. Also related to that, we got $2.5 million from the FAA appropriated to the airport. And so that was a huge, huge hit, unexpected, quite honestly. The initial thought was we were going to get 177,000, I think was the number. And through good work by the airport manager and our staff, they were, the ultimate price that we will be provided by the FAA is 2.5 million, if I'm not incorrect. Is that a fair statement, Amber? Because I think that's the correct number. We had a good discussion about how, what the impact was to the airport and the airport commission last week. And that was, goes a long ways to reducing the impact to our, specifically to our airport. Now, if we can be only that successful for our entire community, that'll be a great thing.
So on those numbers, one of the great things about the airport funding through the CARES Act is, is that it is a, can be drawn down over multiple years. So we don't have to spend all of that money at once. And we can draw it down for any need. So it can be used for personnel, it can be used for other operating costs. And then, once we get through the recovery, the money is allocated to the airport and it could be used for a capital project. So it's very, very flexible, more, more flexible than we've ever seen before coming from federal funding. And that's fantastic. We've also are receiving almost 800,000-ish, 700, 800,000 dollars worth of CARES Act funding specifically for public transit. And we are signing the contract this week on the first round of that appropriation of funds directly distributed to Durant, City of Durango or Durango Transit Operations, which will help with offsetting operations for running, continuing to run the transit system as well.
Do we need a motion to send the letter or?
Just nods.
Okay.
Council support. Thanks for doing that, Amber. Okay, any further discussion with council and city update? Looking around, don't see any. Okay, I think with that, then we will move to our moved agenda item 12.2, discussion and possible action concerning approval of city council working agreement or an agreement. This original document was created by our city attorney, Dirk Nelson, based on observations of council throughout the year. I'll let Dirk add to this communication as soon as I kind of say a few things for the record. At our last study session, we discussed the draft document and agreed the council would submit their input, but I would, we would, that will be compiled and discussed further tonight. The agenda document that is attached for discussion tonight, so it shows the results of that compilation of the council input that I put together to the best of my ability. The areas in black appear to be areas in which we are all in agreement. And the areas in red appears to be areas in which we need to have further discussion as there was not agreement amongst council regarding these position. In these cases, in the red, there was either one counselor or more in those cases that either want that, wanted that item either completely deleted or modified. So I just highlighted it in red suggesting that further council discussion would be necessary. I was going to see first if Dirk wanted to add anything based on, just to talk about the original document, which has now been pretty significantly changed by council. But if you wanted to just add anything about that, Dirk?
I really don't. I was just essentially acting as a scripter to gather concepts that have been discussed over a length of time. So I really don't have anything to add.
Okay, and just for the record, I, I think it would be helpful for community if we had that as a starting place for where, where, where we started, potentially attached to agenda documentation with this going forward. So this is a draft document. This is, again, a compilation of all of our counselors' input. And as a, as a place to start in this discussion, I would just kind of potentially suggest that I, we reach out to council right now and see if we have agreement that the areas in black are areas that we actually agree to, some, as a basis to begin. Council team, other thoughts from council about the areas in black, some of which counselor knows where these have been at some previous, from previous retreats?
I, I agree, Mayor Yusuf, and I have, you know, because my comments were not words, they were in agreements. I'd like to read my statement to you. As a, to avoid a serial meeting, I didn't share that with entire council because you were the author of this latest version. So if, but first I want to get consensus on the issue that you brought up. If we, if we're just working on the black items, then that's great.
Or on the red items.
Reds on the black, that's great. Well, moving forward, you know, the, one thing for the record, based on a previous statement from the public earlier, the city manager has had no participation in this, in this effort. She has been, in fact, been fully focused on the COVID response and has appropriately not been part of this, either the editing, the crafting or any part of this.
Dean, I think you got, you muted yourself, Dean.
There we go. So I was just, I was just reiterating the fact that the city manager has not spent any time, undue time. She's been focused on the COVID response. And so any assertion that she's spending unwarranted time on this is, is unwarranted discussion. So this is just hi Melissa, I've reviewed all 14 elements as you have crafted. I really appreciate how you pulled out the essential components from previous drafts for emphasis and clarity resulting in 14 rules. These are fundamental practices for governance. While some other suggestions have been made to include the operating agreements from our last retreat, as well as three items suggested by Counselor Baxter, I find that these are behavioral qualities that are in fact implicit in the effective enforcement of these overarching ethical rules of engagement. So I was, I was suggesting that we might, in fact, change the word of this from working agreement, which is sort of innocuous to ethical rules of engagement. Particularly important are the points defined in rules 2, 6, 7, 9, 11 and 14. We've had several issues during the past year specifically rated to these tenants, which if not acknowledged and appropriate protocol defined, will undermine even the most basic decision-making by council. Given the importance of these guidelines for this and future councils, we could title these covenants as city council ethical rules of engagement. As we debate each of these items, I would question the motive of any council member to disregard the intent, merit or ethical basis of these rules for orderly governance. Respectfully submitted. Thank you, Dean Brooke. So we have made some progress. We've got black items that are not up for the discussion, I guess. But I would encourage us to go through each one of these. Spend the time, there's been an assertion that we spend an astounding amount of time. I don't think that's the case for the importance of this document. And I certainly think we need to have something of this magnitude and, and significance moving forward for the next year of conversation.
Mayor, may I ask a process question just for clarification?
Yes, please.
So I hadn't thought about it till Mr. Peters' comment. And so I do want to clarify. And city attorney Dirk, I appreciate your work, but I guess the question is, you're directed by council. So we need all of council to actually agree on directing actions. So from a process point of view, how does this come about? That, you know, when was the discussion that we actually wanted this, our appointee to engage in this activity? I'm trying to clarify that because I'm, I, I don't remember that. And so I'm just, I hadn't thought about it. But from a how we work together and, you know, and Dirk has made that clear to me. When I wanted some information, he really needed to hear from all of council. But that's what we wanted us to do. So I'd like to clarify that because I don't have an understanding of the process.
Well, as I recall, I think this actually came about as a discussion probably flowing from one of the mayor's meetings. And Melissa had indicated that because the retreat was delayed and that this was something that was coming out of the retreat, or anticipated to come out of the retreat, she thought it might be helpful to have some points of discussion to bring to council. So I think it actually came out of that process. Again, it wasn't really creating anything new. I didn't see the, the concept of having this document as being controversial or something that, you know, and it didn't take a lot of time. Again, it was sort of coalescing it from a variety of sources that I already had. So as I recall, that's exactly how it came about. It wasn't intended to be something that was a finished product. Again, as I mentioned last time, it was intended just to spur a discussion. And if council wanted to take up that discussion, that was an opportunity for you to do so. So I hope that clarifies, I, I certainly, you know, I think that that's how it came about.
Thanks for clarifying, Dirk. So back to process, I agree with you, Mayor Proton. I thought that that would be a, I feel like it's worthwhile to go through it kind of as you, as you suggested. It might be the easiest way since we, since there is, you know, a lot that we do agree with here and it's kind of just setting our framework together of how we're going to operate and, and work collaboratively together this, this coming year. It's going to be a big year. We're going to have a lot of decisions to make. So, so this hopefully will, will guide us in some of our agreement as to how, how we work together productively is, is I think the goal. And so the way this is laid out was that Counselor Noseworthy had sent me some ideas to include at the onset on, on respect and just kind of laying out how that operating agreement is intended to work, which, which I, you know, highlighting some valued traits in, in, in our work together. And with respect being a fundamental cornerstone of that relationship, I really appreciated these additions. It talked a lot about transparency. This is something we've worked on as a council a lot this past year. Together, we've had a focus on civility, respect and transparency and open dialogue throughout. So this just is clarifying it in writing. And again, like Dirk Nelson suggested, this is all work that we were going to do in the retreat. But since of course that is going to be pushed back to July, in our, in our, in our study session, or in our meeting last week, we discussed that we would, we would move this forward and continue these discussions. And so under transparency, really, I think we all were in agreement that that was a critical factor for us and one that we all agreed with. And then just this bottom part in red was one that did not have total council support. So I wanted to bring that forward for discussion to start with. And it's talking about the use of email communications by members of council. And it's suggesting, this part is suggesting that that part should be limited to providing information or passing on communications from constituents, but may not be used to engage in discussions of public business, to advocate a position or to otherwise influence decision-making outside of a public meeting. And I can honestly suggest that I can see where there's, could be some concerns about that. But let's, let's talk about this and see if there could either be some potential ways to reword this and something that we all agree on or, or eliminate it altogether. Council thoughts?
I think this is a, an area where we need some, some guardrails, quite honestly. And this is, there has been occasions, and I'm not pointing fingers at anybody. I think perhaps we all, over the course of this past year, have been in violation of this particular tenant. And therefore, I think it's really important to talk about how we use our emails and any other form of communication to influence decision-making outside of a public meeting. It's a basic ethical tenant, but that's not what we are in the business of doing as city councilors.
Correct. And the beginning of this email talks about, you know, the importance that our work be done in public, open sessions and that we do not make decisions by email. I think, I think we're all, we try to be very careful about that. So, yeah.
It's not only just making of a decision, it's influencing, influencing aid to this particular decision outside of a public meeting. And I, I think, as I mentioned, I think we can all take some liability in having violated that rule over the past year.
Well, I would just say that I think that this section is interpreting the open meeting laws without a need to do that. So I think you're, this section is saying, here's what an open meeting law says. And I don't think that's true. As a matter of fact, if I could find it, unfortunately, I had to move out of my office because of internet connection. But the City of Lakewood had a statement in one of their documents that Amber sent out several months ago when we were talking about ethics. That says that the, essentially, I'm going to be paraphrasing, that the Supreme Court of Colorado has determined that conversation among city councilors, unless it pertains specifically to their policymaking capabilities, is not in violation of open meetings law.
I, thank you, Counselor Baxter. Dirk, can you potentially provide some guidance on that?
Sorry, I'm trying to, I'm trying to, okay. Well, I think that the intent of, of that whole section is to, in fact, assure compliance with the open meetings law. So there's obviously room for interpretation. There's, none of these areas are black and white. I think that the intent was indeed to state that within the realm of the decision-making capacity of council, then public business wouldn't be conducted outside of an open meeting. And I assume that that concept is acceptable and that's sort of contained in the early part of that same paragraph. So I, I think as long as we can agree that council will abide by the open meetings law, then, you know, maybe that's sufficient. And then we can fine tune that as we go along.
Thank you, Dirk. I, I agree with you. I think the black words, councilors should work to comply with the letter and spirit of open meeting law at all times is perfectly, encompasses what we should be doing perfectly.
I too think that the black part and the transparency is sufficient.
That's less than transparent is, in my opinion. That's, that's, that's to our public. For us to be having essentially a meeting via email is certainly less than transparent in my mind. And, but I guess that's a decision how transparent council really wants to be to the public.
I don't think any of us are suggesting that we should have email meetings and make decisions by email. I think you're misinterpreting what's being said here. I think that we're all willing, well, maybe we are. I'm definitely willing to comply with the spirit of the open meetings law.
I as well, yeah. But to advocate, I'll take the last sentence, to advocate a position or otherwise influence decision-making outside of a public meeting is, in my mind, even if it would happen to technically meet the law, letter of the open's meeting law, I don't think that's providing appropriate level of transparency to our public in what we do in our daily basis, in our daily operation. I don't, I won't do it. I will continue not to do it. And if anybody else wants to do it, then I, I think that's being, that's inappropriate council action.
I was just going to add, just real quickly, and then, and then Barbara, we'll switch to you. You know, I can, I can just say that I've experienced this problem myself because certainly, I think we all obviously have. because certainly, I think we all obviously have, we're all opinionated elected leaders and we, we, we typically have opinions, each of us. Pretty much everything that we're discussing, of course, we're trying to listen at the same time. But as we listen and as we learn, we, we start developing our own opinions. And the difficulty of this situation for me, in this particular role, is that when a particular, when, when a counselor might state their position by email, I, I recognize very quickly that I, I don't, I can't reply all with my position because we start to create a serial meeting by that. And so that's the difficulty of the situation. And if one person is, is sharing their opinion on a regular basis or, or doesn't believe that this is a, a, a way to, to, that we need to be careful with our communication, then it makes it difficult, honestly, for some of us. Because I, I, I've, I've been in that situation more than once. And my, my response and what I've learned to do this year, I've shared this practice with our city attorney, is I do not, I simply, in most cases, unless it's a scheduling issue, I don't respond by email. It really has to be brought up in new business or it has to be brought up in an open session. Or you really, it shouldn't be talked about because we can't be getting that consensus and/or even trying to drive that consensus by email. So that's what I struggle with here. I don't think that this is one that, that we need to belabor too much. Even just having the discussion, I think, is helpful for all of us to understand that this is, this is an issue that some of us face. And I, I'm actually thankful for the opportunity to share what to me, I think, is a difficult position that it, it places all of us in. When someone's sharing their perspective by email, the rest of us, just so you know, cannot, we don't have that choice or it's a serial meeting, from what I understand. And correct me if I'm wrong, please, Dirk.
Melissa, may I jump in just for a minute? Thank you. You know, when I wrote that section on transparency and basically I, I copied what, what Dirk had written. So for me, if it's good enough for the attorney, it's fine for me. And I think the, the statement about if you don't support the inclusion of this, this extra paragraph, then you're not willing to be as transparent. You know, I, I, I want to be careful with that because I think that it's a commitment to honoring the spirit of the open meetings law. And, you know, you know, if it was sufficient, that first paragraph was, in black, was sufficient for the city attorney, then who, you know, that should be it for me. You know, but I think my main point is that if you disagree, it doesn't mean that you're desiring to be any less transparent. You just don't think the statement is necessary.
Okay, great. Thank you. Counselor Bateen?
Yeah, I'm gonna be a bit of a broken record on this entire document. And so I'll start now with that. I, I, I don't know who added the additional language that's in red, but in, like much of the rest of the document, I fall in the category of just feeling that these are basic tenants of comportment with council and protocols that I've been familiar with over my experience with council as a counselor and prior to that. The items in red, that, that there's even any debate about that is questionable to me. I, I can't imagine why we're even having a debate. And I would just like to say for the record, I think if, if Counselor Baxter wants to bring that evidence that she mentioned relative to the City of Lakewood forward, I'd love to look at it so that we can have a clear understanding about that kind of thing. But bringing it up at this juncture without that kind of stuff in advance is a little tough for us to respond to. I'm happy with the, I'm happy with the document as written, including the edits of the good councilors. I don't know who wrote what, but I think all of it is so basic. And that is what you're gonna hear from me a lot.
Okay, so that we don't get stuck on this, let's, let's, let's keep this in red and italicize. You know, I, I honestly just even think that having this discussion is, is really helpful even for me. And because I, I just want people to know where some of the difficulty lies. When we open our email and read the fact that someone's stating a position, everyone should know if we decide to take that out and/or keep it in, that it places all of us in a difficult situation, that we're trying, we should try not to sway by email, that that's not our goal and objective as a council. Just, and just, and, and, and so I think this is something, but maybe we can move on. Let's just try to move on from this and see where we go with the rest of the document. And because I think that there's some other issues that are actually more important. So if we could try to move on from this, okay, thumbs up. Okay, so we're gonna move on to item number four, which is individual members should avoid giving staff, city staff, direction. I think everyone agrees with that because they, our city staff does not report to council. But there is a part in red, and it, it just basically said that if a council member does feel it's necessary to compete, communicate directly with the staff member, then the city manager should preferably be copied on that message so that they're aware. Not all councilors agree with that. I'd love to hear from counsel.
I think that's a fine idea. I thought that's how we were trying to handle things. So I, I agree with that.
I just have a point, am I off? I have a point, Melissa, just that, given the previous conversation, the fact that, you know, it sounds like you and Dirk and Dean kind of talked about preparing this document. And again, not only should individual members of council avoid giving direction to the city staff, they should avoid giving it to their appointees at an individual level without consensus. So I, I, I think that might be something we want to think about structuring it into that language.
Just to clarify for you and, and for the record and for the community who might be listening. So, and the reason also, as, as Dirk suggested that this came about is that, and I mentioned it a couple of times at our last meeting, is that, you know, we had a full two-day retreat scheduled, all for Wednesday and all for Thursday of this week, sixteen hours of a retreat. A half a day of that was scheduled for working with individuals to kind of work together on, on talking about our relationship, our roles and responsibility of a coun, as, as a council, how we communicate as a council. And so this, as a result of having a lack of meetings in which we could bring things up under new business to say, you know, in light of the fact that we aren't having a retreat and we recognized that this was an item of importance previously discussed for that agenda retreat, you know, we, we, we thought that we would bring it forward in an agenda documentation to that meeting of which I, I did not participate in the creation of that original format. It was brought forward to us by all of us. We all received that documentation at the same time from our city attorney. We reviewed it then together as a council and there was majority support to move forward, recognizing that kind of clarifying how we communicate in ways that we communicate and understanding, setting the framework for our relationship together and our roles was important. And so I just wanted to clarify that. And yeah, Counselor Bateen?
Yeah, I just wanted to own this one. This one happened to be my edit. And, you know, the intent here was just that, I know sometimes I've had an instance where maybe I'm having a running conversation with a staff member that I interact with regularly because I'm on a board or something like that. And so it, it's more natural to communicate with that staff member. So I, you know, I was just trying to think of that instance, but, but not wanting to leave the city manager out of the loop since that's technically their employee. So that was the intent. It's just that, you know, it seemed more natural to include those. That's why I put it in.
And I think I heard that Counselor Baxter was in agreement. I'm in agreement. Is anybody not in agreement with that red then? Maybe I had that incorrect.
I'm in agreement with the red. I just think we need to add, to broaden it beyond the city staff to the engagement with our appointees.
Okay, so we can say, communicate with, directly with staff members or appointees. I'm happy with that?
Except that we wouldn't, we wouldn't copy the city manager on our appointee conversations.
Yeah, that, that's not at all the, the situation here. This is, this is meant to identify communications from us to any staff member that is under the purview of the management of the city manager. The city attorney, as an example, is not under the purview of the city manager. There are appointees and they are, are direct, we can talk to them directly.
Oh, I understand, I understand that. It's about the individual members, you know, trying to give direction to appointees. That's, that's my point, is that not only is it appropriate under the staff that reports to the interim city manager, but also if we're taking this framework, we also need to recognize that each of us, you might have individual conversations with our different appointees, the judge or the city, city attorney, but we don't provide direction. It's still going back, and I appreciate Melissa's clarification. I appreciate that. But if you're gonna formalize a document like this, then we need to all agree that, you know, providing direction to our appointees is driven by consensus.
And we, we could just make this two different numbers. So one number applies to city manager and staff and the other applies to appointees.
We could add a number and just say the same thing. I have no problem with that. And again, just to clarify, it was, you know, Barbara, as you know, we had had no meetings. We had, you know, it was a very strange time.
I understand, I, I, but I think if we're gonna, if we're gonna codify this in some way, it needs to be.
Yeah, so we could either make it two or we could literally just add. I have no problem with it at all.
I have, I have a suggestion to start about in, but if you look at three, it talks about recognizing council acts as one body and creating policy, individual members should avoid directing the city manager and detail the management issues. I think that might be the place to add in because you're really talking about having council act as one body and giving direction to the city manager. And it would apply equally to me. I don't know that you would have policy direction for the judge, but we could certainly maybe add a city manager or city attorney right there in number three and it could, it certainly could solve the problem.
Agreed.
I agree. I think that's good. Apologize, Barbara, I, I was just, I, paragraph four was strictly about the city manager. So I didn't want to try to convolute that particular statement, so.
So to clarify, we'll add to item number three, but item number four, as is, is okay, including the red. Correct? Excellent. Okay, item number five, um, um, let's see. Individual members of council should avoid burdening the city manager with inquiries for information or dictating direction or actions not requested by or authorized by the council as a whole. It is preferred that individual requests for information be brought up under new business to ensure that there is council support for staff dedicating to the request of information. I think that our councilors have some, uh, I think everybody has some pretty vocal opinions about this. So who would like to start?
I'll jump in. So, you know, I sent this in my note that, first of all, defining burdening, but I also think that there are times, and I'll speak from my experience, you know, in reviewing this budget, and I know that I can also, because I, I saw it also coming from Counselor Baxter, I had a lot of questions and a lot of requests for information because things were inconsistent. And waiting till another study session, who's to determine when? You know, you try to get those questions out and I, I firmly believe that Amber and Devin and Wayne all appreciated them. But that was a lot of information. I went, you know, in my case, going through the budget. So, you know, I, I find this kind of trying to describe all scope of how we interact, and I don't think it's necessary. I think if you interact with respect and stuff, you're, you're, you're waiting for it because it's gonna help you make a decision or you see inconsistencies and it's gonna contribute to a better product or document or plan. So I have real issue with supporting this.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Noseworthy. And Counselor Bat, Bateen will go to you, but I just want to add one quick thing as I think about it, after public participation. I think what I would love to do on this item, if we could, is kind of remove the example of the budget because I think that the budget was a very different situation for all of us. I don't think that any councilors were upset with trying to correct the errors and omissions in the budget. In fact, the end result of where we ended with the budget is, is really remarkable. You know, I, I, I really give all, the majority of that credit to our staff and the work that they did to, to correct the errors and omissions, sending the budget to DOLA, doing all of the work that they did. I really truly did not, if, if we remove the discussion of the budget from this and we just consider it generally, because going forward, we're really not gonna have that issue nearly as much. And we've corrected so many of the inaccuracies with the budget this past year. And so going forward, it's, it's just, if, if we could think forward, because this is gonna be our interaction for the following year, how we, how we agree to work together and, and think about other issues that might come up unrelated. Maybe they're related to utilities, maybe they're related to, I don't know, you know, it could be a number of things. I think that's what this is meant to address for me. Counselor Bateen, sorry?
Yeah, I was just gonna maybe suggest a friendly amendment to this, maybe a, when possible, as an introductory to it or, you know, the words best practices may include. And the, and the reason I say that is, I think, you know, it's Counselor Baxter's point. I think there are, or not Baxter, I'm sorry, Noseworthy's point. I think there are certainly a number of cases we can all probably think of when you can't wait for that next meeting to ask the question that you might even need for the upcoming meeting. So I think the, you know, it certainly happens. I think the intent, and I don't know who wrote this one either. I didn't have any involvement here, but I think the intent here is the burdensomeness that it can be, it can be overwhelming and it really ends up sometimes taking more time. That person may, you know, take more time from the city staff than is warranted by one counselor. And I say, so as a best practice, might be a good idea to just try and limit that as much as possible. But certainly there are gonna be cases where you're gonna need information. And in that case, you should counsel, not only should the city manager copy the council back as has been practiced in the past so that all councilors receive all that information at once, but the counselor's asking should probably, you know, copy us in, as I think happens pretty regularly. So just a friendly.
Yeah, I, you know, if I was to put a caption on, on paragraph five, it's called micromanagement. And I think it's not the city, uh, council's purview to micromanage the, the function of the city manager. Information flow is critical, but when one or, you know, when somebody's u- using up all that time, then it restricts the information flow to the rest of us. So that's why it would be beneficial to five members on council to have, to, to agree that, that that comes to the top of information that's required to make appropriate decisions for the coming meetings. And, and if it's just simply information that is, you know, needed to be known as background information, there's, whether it's a report or whatever, that can be a staff request that is, is made and, and the timeline, an appropriate timeline given for that request. We can't, can't expect that there's instantaneous response from staff always. And, and, but I would, I would concur with Counselor Bateen that as, as a best practice, individual members of council should avoid burdening the city manager with requests for information or dictating direction, actions not requested by or authorized by. That's really the meat of this, not so much the information, but dictating the direction or actions not requested by or authorized by council as a whole. That's the more important part of that sentence, I believe.
And I would just add to this one that, and, you know, the second sentence is really important to me because councilors have a right to information and councilors will get, have questions as it, as, as, as we kind of go through the year. But ideally, when possible, and I, I really like that addition as well, is, you know, ideally, if, if it can wait, instead of sending an email requesting information, i- if we could bring it up, the preferred method would be to bring it up in new business if it's not critical information at the day, on that day, you know, and if it can wait till the following meeting and bring it out either in council reports and actions during a city council meeting or in a study session under new business and say, I'm really, would like to get more information on this topic and this is the reason why, and I want to know if I have council support to do so. And can you, and then we can talk about with the, the manage, you know, with our interim city manager or city manager at the time about how that information could best be disseminated to all of us.
So I, my comment on this would be that the only person who knows if they're burdened is the city manager. And so I would suggest that the city manager's responsibility is to acknowledge if that's the situation. I also think that information should not be dictated by the majority of council. If there is one person on council who has serious concerns about, and I'm going to use the budget as an example because it's a perfect example, has serious concerns about certain items in the budget. has serious concerns about certain items in the budget and none of the other counselors, that doesn't bother them, then I don't think it should be, that that information should be non-forthcoming, just because not every city councillor wants to know about it. Because not every city councillor may understand that there is something that needs to be known about that information or that request.
Council thoughts? You know, I I don't like to use the budgets again, because again, I think it's unique. We had a lot of errors and inconsistencies to resolve. We're in a much better place with that. So for me, I'm trying to kind of move forward and think about our work together this next year. We may have more questions about the budget. But in any case, even if there were, if you want to use the budget as an example, even if a councillor had 15 questions about the budget and they had them on a Monday and the council meeting was on a Tuesday, or they were not emergent, they could still say, I still have a whole bunch more questions about the budget council team. And, you know, given that we operate as a team, and I recognize this may take our finance staff two hours to prepare. I really need this information. I would really, I just want to make sure I have council support. What I'm trying to suggest is that's the ideal way of operating as a team when we are still recognizing that we're taking staff time to compile information for us, be it for whatever project it might be. And so when possible, and if we have the appropriate, and if it's not a crisis or critical, that that information get, be provided to the councillor on that day, which likely doesn't happen in any case. I think Amber is welcome to weigh in on the number of emails that she has on her computer at this time, which is completely overwhelming. Then it's just, it's just an ideal situation if we have that ability to each discuss it, because there's also the opportunity, if something's brought up in new business and you want to dictate staff to answer emails around a budget, if you want to use that as an example for two hours, we might have other questions that could be added to that discussion or other opinions, you know, other thoughts that we might also want to ask questions. You might spur our interest as well. And it should be probably done in open session if it's prefer, if it's an option. That's just my thought.
I agree. I think the budget was, yeah, not a great example for a number of reasons, primarily because there was never any hesitation by any one of five councillors to ask all the questions that were in fact asked by all of us relative to the budget situation. So this is really just, you know, to make sure that the communications to staff, to the city manager, doesn't get usurped by one or, you know, has majority representation as a question that is asked by council of the city manager.
Once again, Dean, I don't believe that majority consensus should rule the information that is asked for or received.
Dean, I wanted to jump in. You also had said earlier that you were less troubled by requests for information, but more about dictating, which is covered up earlier, you know, direction, all of that's covered earlier than that the council acts as a whole and provides direction as a council. So I also believe that a request for information is two points. You know, done with respect for each other for the time that it might be required, but I also don't think that you need to have consensus on what I may need to help me make a decision. You may not need that, and so you may not value my, and this is an example, it's not specific. Someone, another councillor may not value the expenditure of that time. So I actually think it's covered earlier under, we don't provide direction. You know, we provide direction as a council. And I think that if you go back to, you know, a spirit of respect for each other and their time, I think you're probably covered. So I agree with Kim, with Councilor Baxter, that different people may have different requests for information, and I'm not certain that that should, to Councilor Batine's.
Barbara, you just unmuted yourself.
Sorry, to Councilor Batine's comment, you don't, sometimes can wait because you really want to have that information going into, whether it's a liaison, you know, advisory board meeting or something else. So I am, I think that if you, you should be able to ask for information done with respect for the amount of time it might take. And to Councilor Baxter's point, the city manager can say, hey, this is, this is what's on my plate. I'm going to get it to you in three weeks. And you're like, fine, great, you know, and you can talk about it.
Councilor Batine?
Yeah, I just, I just would reiterate, I think if this item could have a when possible or as a best practice, it certainly isn't always going to be the case, but it's just a recognition that it can be overburdening. And I just would say, having watched a couple city managers now over a period of time, I would say it seems to be very difficult for the city manager to say that back to their boss, that they've been overburdened, and I've never seen it happen. Even with the most contentious relationship I saw at city council with the city manager, even that person rarely was willing to say that. And so I think that even though that may be desirable to have that person raise their hand, that seems unlikely, given the political implications of that person being your boss. But I'd love to see this in here, and I think it's good if it can just be kind of a best practice.
I might say also, the thing that bothers me about inquiries for information from one specific city councillor is that requires communications that's outside of the public, of a public forum. And so why can't that question simply be asked at a study session or a public hearing? As opposed to an email, a private email from one councillor to the city manager, in which case the four of us are left out of that communication. You know, we need to control this, we need to know what communication is going on, what is being asked. And that has been done to a certain extent, certainly. Requests have been copied to all counselors in some cases, but I don't know about all. It's just a level that we shouldn't be doing this kind of request 111 with the city manager. We need to act as a body as a whole, is my whole point there.
How about if I add the thought that, you know, just one option or consideration for council? Again, this is a working agreement that we're talking about to work productively as a team. And so I agree with Councilor Baxter that if an individual councillor wants information, that individual councillor should be able to get that information truly. I do agree with that fact. But ideally, you know, when possible, which I agree with those terms, you know, if we could ideally, still, if it's myself and I want information on the money that we have saved in the water, you know, in our water fund, and for what reasons that's saved and for what time, and I want details and I want, I want information, and I feel like I really need to get that information because it's valuable to me. And even if all other counselors don't agree with me, and I bring that up in session, I might still have the right to say, I'm sorry, I disagree. I still, and I'm an elected official, I'd like to see that information at some point. I am really willing to work with your time schedule interim city manager and council. And, you know, when might I be able to see this information that works? That's another way of trying to work together. We're talking about how we can work together collaboratively and productively going forward. And how about something like that, where we recognize that an individual councillor may want information that doesn't have majority support from the council team, and they still should likely have access to that information, be able to get that information. But we also, as a team, should recognize how much time it's going to take the manager and when it might be able to be provided, and preferably in open session. How does that sound?
Collected.
And so, okay, so I think I'm trying to kind of find agreement for all of us. That's what the goal is here, guys. It's not to isolate people, it's not to withhold information. It's to talk about the framework for how we're going to really work well together going forward. Okay, so I think we have agreement on that. We're going to add when possible. We also, you know, if.
I'm sorry, did you say agreement on that? I don't agree with that, so.
I'm sorry.
Or do you mean consensus?
I was just wondering if I had council support with that kind of framework of idea, which is, I agree with you, Councilor Baxter, that if you want some information that might take the finance department or the utility team two hours to create, that ideally, you're going to bring that up, or I would. I mean, I'm only using you as an example, it could be myself. I would ideally bring that up under new business. Whether I had your support or not, I would still say I'd still like that information. And so when might that information be able to be prepared to me, recognizing that it's not a priority for the remaining council members? It's talking about how we're going to work as a team.
Sure, I understand what you're saying, and I don't disagree with what you're saying, but that doesn't mean I agree with number five.
I think number five is saying, when possible, and, you know, especially in the second sentence, individual members will be brought up under new business to ensure that there is council support. You know, what would you support? How could that be reworded? I'm trying, what I'm trying to do is see if we can work collaboratively as a team here to see if we can just outlay this. Maybe it says something like, it's preferred that individual requests for information be brought up under new business, and we can take out to ensure that there is council support, if that's something you might support. And we could say something like, to understand the limitations on staff time or something, recognizing that they do have limited days, and also recognizing that that's only going to get more difficult in these next three to six months.
As councillor Noesworthy has said, I believe that adhering to a policy of respect would handle that, and that section five is not necessary.
I just think that we've, at least I have seen, through the email communication that we've experienced this past year, and the community is not able to see that, that it's been, it has been overwhelming for our staff. And so this is meant to try to address that. And so for me, I think it's important that we actually do more than just discuss it, but we actually write about it so that we can come to an agreement on how we're going to work together going forward. And if we can't come to that agreement on how we're going to work together going forward, that too speaks to the difficulty of the situation that we have at times, I would say. And so if we can't come to an agreement on that one, then let's try to move on. So we'll just keep number five circled. How about that?
Okay.
Okay. I think we should move on.
That's an, okay, let's move on to number, so we'll circle that item. No agreement made. Number eight. Should be the goal that all members of councils are given the same information from city staff and from each other at the same time so that everyone is working with the same information. I can't recall who had problems with that and/or why. If someone wants to speak up, I'd love to hear the reasoning. I'm hearing no voices. Are we all in support of number eight?
As I read it, Melissa, I do have a question. First of all, I don't think we need the final phrase that says, so that everyone is working with the same information. That's like what we've asked for. But I think, as I consider this, here's the example. I send you my, I send you my edits, right? But so that everyone has the same information, I choose to send it to all city counselors so that they all have the same information. You know, they're not to reply, I'm not trying to influence them, I'm just sending them the information. Now, Dean chose not to, because he saw it as influencing. So if we're going to be sharing information and all having the same information at the same time, what are the parameters around that? Not that I'm opposed to having shared information, it's just we're not practicing it the same way. And maybe that's interpretation.
Good question. I think Dean was concerned about a serial meeting, and as was I, because this is an unusual project, the compilation of information. But I was informed from our city attorney that it was okay. So I think maybe Dirk, we would need to turn to you for some guidance on this.
Well, I think the idea is just that if staff gives information to one member of council, then everyone should have the same information. I assume that that concept is acceptable. I think it's this question of the other part of, and from each other at the same time. That part of it could raise questions, again, about, you know, my interpretation of the open meetings law is that sharing information with each other is far less problematic than stepping close to advocacy or decision-making. That's where you cross the line into violations of, or potential violations with the open meetings law. So sharing information with each other is, again, not necessarily is serious a concern. So I guess the point is that, yeah, it may be the simplest thing here is to eliminate that piece of it and just say that the goal is that everyone on council gets the same information from city staff. And we've discussed one avenue to share information is to run it through the city manager's office so that everyone can get everything at the same time and counselors aren't communicating with themselves. That's the tricky part is, there's never a problem with communicating with staff. The tricky part of the open meetings law is communicating with each other. And even if a communication doesn't violate the law, it sometimes gets to, it encourages or it causes people to respond in a way that could create a violation when you have a discussion among more than two of you. So that's the real issue that I see with the open meetings law. So it may be that this one could be cured by deleting the part about from each other at the same time. And then, you know, we stick with providing information from staff to all of council at the same time, which I think is absolutely important.
That works for me. Does it work for the rest of council? Yep. One.
I could accept that for sure.
Great. Okay, let me just make a quick note.
I think it actually may be implicit in another item here, hopefully.
Okay. So let's move on to item number nine. Preferred that members of council should have access to all communication for constituents and other counselors. In furtherance of this principle, council and city staff should strive to set up protocols to allow counselors to have access to all non-personal or clearly confidential communications from constituents to any member of council to assure uniformity and access to that information. Dirk, was this an original from you? And if so, I think that there were some questions around this before from council that we didn't quite understand.
Yeah, I think there was a version of this, and it could have been, again, this was put together very quickly. And so there could have been some grammatical or typographical errors in that. The intent was, and I think this is something that council, that I have heard council discuss in study sessions, is one of the sources of this request, is that that it is difficult when there's communications that aren't shared with the rest of council from constituents that maybe other counselors are interested in seeing. And I do know there's been a discussion, and I can't say exactly when it's occurred, to have this process whereby we would have, and I know the city of Boulder does this, for instance, and there's some other cities that I'm aware of, but primarily Boulder, is that all of those constituent emails to council, unless they are clearly meant to be personal or confidential, are put into a pool where everyone can see them and have access to them. So this is a concept that's employed, I know, in other cities. And I believe this is something that was discussed on more than one occasion, you know, by council. So that's where this one came from.
Council thoughts? Chris?
I just wanted, I remember when this was discussed at a study session. I think we were really talking about feedback from constituents, and it came up as a practice that was done in the other city. Boulder was mentioned. I was very much in favor of this idea because you're talking about transparency. This is the ultimate transparency, like literally. With the concept that I remember Dirk mentioning in Boulder was, not only did they have this available, but they took every email and posted it online so that there was no open records. posted it online, so that there was no um open records requests. You essentially, you wanted to see somebody's email, it was all searchable, you know, as a council email and everything that transpired in council, so it was truly the most transparent form of governance of email. I love the idea, it's a little radical, so I mean, I think I can understand why I stumble over this one, I might need more, you know, more time to foment, but uh that that's my recollection of the conversation. I I love this idea, because it really, you know, to look at over the years, the number of hours that our staff has spent answering open records requests, that, you know, almost every single one that I've seen in the last three years has been erroneous at the end of the day, which is fine, that's what the, that's what the law states, and everybody has a right to that, but to have a better mechanism for them to have access to that is, you know, desirable to me, and it completely creates transparency on council. So we're, we value that, this one really lives that one up.
So Dirk, the language is unclear to me when you're talking about having access to all non-personal or clearly confidential communications. Um, you're giving, you're saying that you wouldn't, if I got a a letter from a constituent, and it was clearly of a personal nature, or it was of a confidential name or uh nature, that wouldn't be um shared with all of council, but that language is um unclear to me.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying, the restrictions are not clear.
Right.
It would not be supplied.
That was what I brought up last time, is it actually says, to allow councilors to have access to clearly confidential communications. Because if you take out the the one item of all non-personal, then you're left with clearly confidential communications being accessed by everyone.
That was clearly not the intent. The intent is that you would share emails other than those that are clearly personal or clearly confidential, so.
And I brought that up last time, but it didn't get changed, and so.
And I didn't touch this after, you know, so, no, I think that that can be, that can be.
I'll take responsibility for that. I was not quite concerned where the concern was, um and so I felt like I needed further dialogue to understand this better. Um, I, maybe Dirk, do you wanna work on maybe some writing on that, that make, might make that part more clear?
So Melissa, I I have to say that um despite the fact that we can name two towns who might be doing the completely, you get to see everything, we don't know what impact that actually has on communications from the constituents, and if the two public comment letters that we received, plus other phone calls that I've received, are any indication, um people are concerned that this would actually put kind of squash uh public comment in many ways, because there are a lot of constituents that would like a particular city councillor to know their issues, but don't want to communicate with other city councilors. If they did, they could click on the city council email on the website and communicate that with every city councillor. And I believe that our constituents should have that choice as to who they communicate with.
I believe that we work as a team, and that any communication from constituents is, the teams communicate, should, the team should understand it, hear it loudly and clearly, in the, in ultimate transparency. Anything short of that is less than transparent.
Well, I just, I disagree with you, Dean, it has, this doesn't have anything to do with transparency, this has to do with people's right to freedom of speech and to their civil liberties, to talk with their representatives as they desire to talk with their representatives.
I also agree that this is not about transparency, it's about choosing who you want to communicate with, and um and to the point that if they wanted to communicate with everyone, as they now know, it would be going to everyone plus the city manager's office. As I have always done, it's, um if I felt felt that it needed to go to the rest of the city council, or I was gonna bring it up, I would write to the person, may I, do I have your permission to share this with all of council? I think that's the respect to the constituents that I owe them. It's not about being transparent, it's about them being able to speak to me in a forum, rather than over a phone call, in a, you know, a convenient forum, and understanding that I can hear their concerns. I don't think it's a lack of transparency, I think it's about being accessible to constituents, and when appropriate, asking that I think this needs to be shared with all of council.
And additionally, at what point will this move into conversations and phone calls? So what you're asking is that emails need to be available to everyone, but what about private conversations? What about phone calls? What about meeting somebody in city market? Do, are you going to now require us to either record those, or to do a, in writing what conversation happened and distribute them among all city councilors? Because there is no difference between um if looking at it from this perspective, this perception, that you should have access to all communication from constituents. That would include phone calls and private meetings.
Like brought up city market, because you do have a, you know, it's a, in a quasi-judicial uh topic. You, you shouldn't be accepting aisle thirteen conversation from a constituent.
Who said anything about quasi-judicial, Dean? I didn't say anything, and this does not say anything about quasi-judicial. This has all communications from constituents.
Having quasi-judicial conversations with your constituents. I do, I want not, I want to know, other people want to know.
I don't have quasi-judicial conversations with the constituents.
And how do I know that?
The one.
Well, then maybe you need to carry a recorder around and follow me around everywhere I go, and tape my phone, so that you know I don't have quasi-judicial conversations with constituents.
If I could, if I could jump in just for a minute, Melissa, I'd like to remind us that we all agreed on the early principles of work from a, every, every councillor's doing his or her best and operating under the best intentions, so uh we're all gonna have a generosity in accepting that view and respect, and so I think that if we've all agreed to those tenets, then the, you, the assumption is that we're not gonna be doing something that's quasi-judicial or illegal, so I'd like to bring that back to the early acceptance of those tenets.
Thank you, Barbara. Uh Chris?
Well, I just wanted to to comment, um and again, I do think this is a little radical, we may need to move on from it, but uh I I think um to Counselor Baxter's point, the difference between email, we've struggled with this a little bit anyways already, is we're trying to communicate to our constituencies as a whole, that these are open records, that they are subject to the open records laws. And so there are, this particular thing is really different than the conversation that you have at the city market, which is that it already qualifies as an open record. And so we're just saying to them, hey, this is an open record now, but it has to be confidential, it's clearly confidential, and it doesn't meet the requirements of this particular item here, um or it's personal, it doesn't meet this qualification. So I think those items are restricted by this category. I don't know what the concern is there, but again, I think it's a, it's a pretty big change, and and I don't know if we need to move on from it or not, but it, you know, I'm again for it, but I don't think it it really qualifies under the conditions that Counselor Baxter was saying, it doesn't expand out, that's a bit of a red herring, if you will.
Well, I would disagree with that, Chris, because what I, what I think you'll see happening is people will stop communicating by email, and they will start communicating by other methods. It was, that'll be one aspect of it. Um, and so I think that we'll actually hear less from our constituents, and we'll be not as well informed, um except I know my phone number's out there, and I get phone calls every day, so I might be the only one that they talk to then.
I can't, oh, go ahead. I'm gonna step in as mayor, give a few minutes here, and just suggest that um uh obviously, um Counselor Baxter, we all get phone calls and communication from our constituents, and we're all in a difficult situation of having to share that information if this were to be um accepted. So I would suggest um that this, in this situation, that we, um, it is a bit radical. I I appreciate the idea to go to uh complete, I mean, if if we were to make this move, I would suggest that this would be an item that we circle back to um with continued discussions later, um because what we would, what it would require is a complete re-education of the community. Um, our email is open to the public, if, you know, it is a public record, and so um it is a different form of communication, but if, if if we were to implement something like this, I too have people, you know, I think we all do, have people that reach out to us and communicate to us, um and and then we do what Barbara says, which is, you know, hey, do you mind if I share this? This is really good information, and then we share it. Um but it would have, we would have to kind of re-educate our public um about that if we were to implement something like this, so perhaps this is something that we continue the dialogue on at a later date.
Yeah, I just would, the only suggestion I wanted to make was just if we did do that, I agree, let's continue it later, but maybe since there are some cities that already do this, we could find out if Counselor Baxter's concerns are are legitimized, you know, maybe they're having those problems, and we should hear that, and it seems like it's it's a pretty big deal, and it's something we should study a little closer, maybe study session topic, that kind of thing.
That's fine with me, we can add it to the agenda, I would be in favor of that. We can talk about it later, and we can also talk about it next week, you know, maybe this is just something we add, but we continue to move on from now.
I I'd like to suggest that, um one, I can't support it, but we could continue to talk about it, but I feel no urgency to continue to discuss this, because I think we have other items, a full agenda next week, so um I don't support it. Um, uh, I think it's, I worry that it's actually, you know, uh, Chris, I think that it's it's radical, but I I worry so much that it's, um, I I worry about the the communication and the, and our constituents feel like they could, they can speak out to us, so I'd like to move on, and I'm not in a rush to revisit. Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you, Barbara. I hear that from you and and possibly Kim Baxter, I'm hearing also from Counselor Brokey and Counselor Bateen, that discussion at another time um would be um op- optimal, um so I say we just uh keep it on our laundry list of items and move on. Um, so with that, we'll move on to item number ten. Um, and I think the first part of this sentence we all agree with, that we will work promptly to initiate resolution of disputes between council members, so they don't fester or escalate escalate in order to foster the most productive working relationship and environment as possible. And then the section that there's a concern over is that council will work to communicate an issue or concern that one has with other, with another city councillor, and share in an appropriate, private, and timely manner. And again, I apologize, can't remember who was not happy with that, if someone wants to speak up. So do we potentially have agreement that this might be okay?
That have just been an addition, Melissa, that came in? I didn't send it in, but could that have been a addition?
Yeah, that was, that was, that came from my three original things that I sent out to Melissa, um about what I thought was appropriate, so, because I feel like timely is incredibly important, and I think that um in an appropriate manner and private is also, it's, that's all I'm just saying.
Yeah, I have no problem with this, um and councillor, other councilors? Okay, so we will accept that, I'm gonna make a quick note and move on. Okay, um, item number eleven was, um, oh, regarding our boards and commissions, council members will work to honor the roles of boards and commissions as offering advice and recommendations to all of council as a whole, and will strive to avoid exercising undue influence over decision-making by those boards and commissions, or by attempting to influence the decision-making of individual members of those boards and commissions. Council, I'll let you guys take it from here.
Uh Dirk, was this in your original document?
Something, something close to it was there, I think, in terms of the boards and commissions were, uh, there was a boards and commissions section, but I'm not sure it was exactly like this. I I can't honestly remember, I don't have the original document.
I I just don't have an understanding of how it came to be included in something like this, because it doesn't seem like anything we discussed, so I was curious.
Yeah, I, I think.
I think that it was in the original document, um and, sorry, I don't have it with me right now, but um it's highlighted in red to be discussed, because I don't think that there was agreement around it. I think the issue is here is um understanding um that our boards and commissions are advisory to council, um they advise all of us, um and the goal here is to, I believe, you know, it's also recognizing that we're in, when we're in our boards and commission meetings, that we don't wanna exercise undue influence on those various boards that we all sit on, um so that we can ensure that we give them the space, um and, and, you know, room to 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 provide the recommendation that they're providing to to council without undue influence, is what I'm reading into this. Correct me if I'm wrong, Dirk, and any thoughts from council?
I think this is a fundamental uh item that has been uh stressed over the past year, in and uh in how we achieve, how we accept information from our boards and commissions, and individuals from our boards and commissions, uh and uh and uh how we communicate with individual members of our boards and commissions. Uh, in in my mind, they should be communicating to us as a body, a body to body, not individual to individual, and to give an individual a voice is inappropriate on our part, and for us to uh in undue the influence, or in any way influence, the independent uh consideration of a particular topic by a board and commission is inappropriate by council.
The one thing that you've added there, um Mayor Proton Brokey, is that that I actually uh see value in too, that 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 we should probably discuss here, is that, you know, they um, that that we do act as a team, and so if any one individual is is trying to influence, then they likely um might not have the support of the rest of the team if we haven't, if we haven't had that conversation yet as a team. Um and so, so I think we have to be careful with, with, with that aspect, I I would agree with that.
I think the important inclusion that you said, Dean, is that the advisory boards act as a body reporting to the council, and that's not stated in here, and that's been part of the discussion that we've been having with the um advisory boards through the thing, so I think that's the important issue, is that, you know, the council, you know, it may be keeping it in the council issue, it's the council um has a direct reporting line to, or the the advisory boards have a, have a direct reporting line to the council, and in that regard, it's as as the hold, and so I I think it's the, I understand your intent, I think what you said about the reporting relationship would need to be included in some way.
I I thank you for that uh that thought, you know, that's the other, the yin and the yang of that, uh, council members should work to honor the reports, uh rules, roles of the board, and uh allow them to be independent as, and so I, I like this in its entirety as written, but I would like to add that too, that the individual uh uh board reports to the city council as a whole, uh and not uh as individual members of the board. Um, it's gonna, how how are we pull this document together, whether it's Dirk or?
I think it, I think it needs a little reworking, um, I don't think, I don't think we need to word smith it right now.
Well, I, you know, I I don't know that the words that are existing here need to be reworked, but I think the addition that you're recommending is a, is a very good one, and a very important one, and uh in in that uh it identifies the method in which they respond back to us. But as stated, it says that we also don't uh exercise undue influences over decision making by the boards and commissions. So I think it's just another sentence that uh can be added to that fairly simply.
I do wanna be clear, though, I think um the concern I have with this is um I feel that I need to be accessible to any constituent who wants to have a conversation with me. And if an advisory board member wants to have a conversation with me, then, and say, Barbara, you know, what do you think? And it always comes back with, well, I'm one person, but these are the questions I would have, you know, this, or this, and this. And so I don't think that's exercising undue influence, nor do I wanna get to the point where um there's any intent to limit those kind of conversations with advisory board members.
Let me, let me say this, uh, is that when we appoint a member to a board, uh in one sense, they no longer become citizens, they be- They become a board member relative to issues discussed and officiated by that board. So to have a disconnect, a direct contact to you as a councillor should not happen.
Where does it, where does it say that in the Boards and Commissions handbook?
It should.
They lose their status as a citizen.
No, no, they don't lose their status as a citizen, but they take on an ethical obligation as a member of that board to not.
Where does it say that in the Boards and Commissions manual?
I think, you know, I, I don't know that it does, but it's, does it seem logical to you that an, an individual member has a greater voice to a city councillor than the body as a whole? And I would argue that.
I, I don't say an individual does. An individual has an equal voice to every other individual.
Right. And therefore should not be directing correspondence, thoughts, all that independently of the board to a councillor. That's an overreach.
I, I think I'm going to have to disagree, agree to disagree with you on this, Dean. I think that there are certain aspects, for example, you've had a lot of experience on the Airport Commission, that a new airport commissioner might have questions for you about what's your experience of this? How does this work? What's, in your mind, how do these things happen? And that question may not be appropriate for another city councillor because they don't have that experience, but for you it might be. And so I don't see any reason why an individual board member, as a resident or as a board member, does not have the right to communicate with their city councillors.
And I don't think.
That's not my intent.
I would like, I, I want to reiterate that I, I would agree that they have a right to communicate with their city councillors. I think the goal here, the goal, again, that we're trying to address in a, in a, in an agreement of how we work together is understanding that, asking each other if we agree with the fact that it is not a position that we want to bind ourselves in where we are individually exercising undue influence on, on a board or an individual member of a board that therefore may influence the decision and recommendation that ultimately comes back to council. With any board, with any commission, of course, people can communicate with each other. This is not an attempt to, to control that. But we all do. We all know that we all do. We all get emails from, from various members on boards. But I think that the goal here is to strive to avoid exercising undue influence. And, and if we have a problem with that, I do think we need to have that discussion and, and, and recognize that if certain councillors disagree, that if they want to have undue influence on a particular board, we should all be aware of that and know that that might be happening so that.
Melissa, I think what you just did right there was stepping over the line. To imply that an individual councillor wants to have undue influence over a board member.
So let me just read the question. We're not trying to have, I'm not trying to step over the line. I'm reading what it says here. That as, that we will strive to avoid exercising undue influence. And so my question to the group here, reading the language that is in front of us, is do we, you know, it's, it's clear that some have a problem with this language. And I think that what I'm trying to do is bring us back to the reason why we're having this discussion in the first place. The reason why it was included by our city attorney in the document in the first place. Because we want to ultimately remember that the goal is to keep our advisory boards as independent function advisory boards, providing recommendations to the council team as a whole. And that's what I would like to clarify to.
And could I, could I just ask to clarify, Dean, because, because your comment was you didn't think individual advisory boards should be reaching out to councillor members? And that was close to your statement. Do you still hold that view? Because I, and is that your interpretation of what this suggested language implies?
Dean, you're on mute.
You're on mute.
Thank you, thank you. I believe that individual members certainly don't give their up their rights as citizens. They have the right, as the mayor indicated, to always communicate with, with members of council. But we've seen in the past week, and I don't need to get into specifics, situations where an individual of a board is making recommendations about how life should be, which is not the, the intent or has any kind of concurrence by the rest of the board. So why should we give that person more consideration than the consideration of the entire consensus of the board? That's my whole point in this. And it's not, it's not taking away his, his opportunity to have an opinion. He has an opinion. He's on the board. He's one of the members of the board. His, and the purpose of the board is to gain consensus, to present a recommendation to council for action. And that's, and anything, when they step over the line and try to cherry pick a particular city councillor, then it becomes overreach. And then it's, it's trying to, as Melissa read, exercise undue influence over decision-making by one person to us. That's in simple terms. I ta, I find it offensive.
Counselor Bateen?
Well, I just want to point out.
I also find that, you know, the smirks, nastiness and the things that we said we would not do in a meeting such as this, offensive. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Dean, but I can smile and I'm not smirking. I'm, I just think it's very interesting that you can't differentiate between when an individual board member sends you information and advocates for something that they think might be helpful. And when the board does, I certainly can do that. I don't take that as any more, having any more weight than the board's recommendation. But I do find them interesting concepts and I oftentimes say, hey, I'm glad you're bringing this up to the board. I'm glad you're going to have that conversation. I don't see anything wrong with that.
I find it totally inappropriate. Totally.
I'm going to hear from Counselor Bateen and then I just want to add too, that for those who criticize us for having this type of work, you can see how fundamentally and as important it is that we try to lay the groundwork for how we can productively work together going forward for issues such as this. Counselor Bateen?
I, yeah, I just wanted to point out, I think that, you know, the members of the boards and commissions, they obviously are bound by our code of ethics as part of their manual. And, and I think, you know, the intent of all of this is to provide guidelines to us. It's not to say you can or cannot explicitly do any particular function, but in my mind, this guideline is saying to us, hey, our role is not to lobby the board. Our role is not to lobby our own special interests. We all have individual interests about specific projects in the city, whether it's a water project or it's a recreation project or whatever it is. And we're, 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 our actions should take place on council. That, that's my take on this. And it needs to be rewritten in a way that is better palatable to this, this council than, okay. But our action is on council. And so if we don't get our way in a vote on council, this is saying, hey, it's not your job, nor should you, nor is it ethically proper for any of us to go behind the council and to go to the board and try and influence pedal or lobby that board to make another decision. That, that to me is what this is trying to get at. And I think it's acceptable for it to get at that idea. And I'm, I'm, I'm for that concept of it. And I hope we're all for that because we really shouldn't be doing that. That's why the boards act as independent entities for us and provide us their offer and recommendations. So just want to make that point. I think it's a good provision and if any were reworded, then so be it.
Chris, I want to thank you for summarizing that really well. That, that is exactly, I, I really appreciate that. That's a message that I was trying to convey. I would agree wholeheartedly. And I would agree that if we need to rework and re, re, re-wordsmith this, that we can talk about how we're going to go about doing that at the conclusion of this.
I would like to include in that, that sentence that Counselor Nosworthy suggested, which is that it works in reverse as well.
Okay, let's move on and we'll talk in the end about how we're going to take next steps. Nice that we agreed on item number 12. And then moving on to item number 13. Okay, I, I might be able to add, talk about this one. Individual members of council who meet independently with the city manager, including the mayor, should do their best to update the remaining members of council on topics of conversation discussed at the conclusion of the meeting when possible. And I'll just start because I actually added this, I added this, I think, and, and I, I think, I don't, I don't think it was in the original document. I think this was an ad from me. And I did it based on conversations I've had in the past with councillors, with Counselor Baxter. In particular, when, when we ran into difficulties where I had information that I had included, that I had gotten from potentially my mayor's meetings or meetings that I had with, you know, with staff. And, and that there was a desire that I share those. So I was trying to be amenable and to create an environment that might be more productive and communicative to council by doing this. I'm very happy to take it out. If council doesn't want it, I was trying to honestly be helpful. But if that's not helpful for council, let's remove it by all means.
I actually think Melissa could be very helpful with the example that you provided. I also look at my own individual meetings with, with the interim city manager. And, you know, a lot of it is clarify this, clarify that. Can you give me an update on that? And so I, it's, it's mostly, in my case, you know, information sharing, which I think, so I, I actually think in the role of the mayor that you, and what you've tried to do is after there's a mayor's meeting, if possible, send a note. Information sharing, you all have the same things. These are the things we discussed. I, I find it harder on the individual level when you're just trying to get your 45-minute phone conversation and, and talk through a few items that, hey, you know, we haven't followed up on this. Where's this going? You know, what's going with that?
Only difference there though, that I guess my only response back that I would suggest, you know, because I haven't, is that really as we, we, the mayor runs the meetings, we all know that. And the mayor has access kind of the face of council and the representative of council for that year. But we're, we're all really independent and we're all really carry the same values. So it's not really fair this coming year to say, Dean, you know, we, you know, if you are as mayor pro tem, if you are elected as mayor, you know, we want you to keep us posted on all your meetings. But, you know, I can go ahead now if I'm not mayor anymore and meet with Amber and not share any of that communication. So it doesn't kind of seem fair.
Well, Melissa, let me say that when you and I were having that conversation before that you alluded to.
I just wanted to finish, if I could just finish. I was just going to suggest that one of the things could be in, in that communication, like the communication blast that I did out based on Counselor Baxter's request that I update council, it was brief. And if, if you ha, if, if a councillor, if I this coming year have a, have a, um, a, a 45-minute conversations with, with Amber, I, I could just, i- i- if it's helpful to council, I don't mind taking the time and saying, hey, just FYI, I met with Amber and I had 15 questions on the budget or a bunch of questions on the budget. If you'd like more detail, I'm happy to provide it, but it's, it wasn't very, you know, we can just provide an update if you think that that's helpful. But to say that it is only from the mayor, I, I guess I'm not sure, I mean, in, in mayor meetings, I'm not, I'm, I, I, I'm not sure, that, that doesn't seem very transparent and fair to me, but, but I'm open for consideration. I was trying to be helpful in this case.
So since you've mentioned my comments with you twice, I thought I should express what I, what I really meant by those comments, which was that when the mayor and the mayor pro tem in most cases are meeting with the city manager to determine what the agenda items might be or how this process works or what gets spoken about in city councils. So when you guys are actually having, I don't know if policy is the right word, but discussions about what the city council is going to be discussing and what items get on the agenda, then I think it's very, very appropriate to inform council of what you're discussing so that we know that. When it's just a conversation like Counselor Nosworthy was discussing where, how's this working for you? Is there anything I can do to support you in making that happen? How do I help? I don't think that that's a necessary communication because it doesn't affect council as a council.
Well, and the reality is, is it may change anyway. Because I, I had mayor meetings and I had a mayor meeting with a mayor pro tem. That is independent, that's dependent upon the mayor. In the past, they haven't always had those. In the past, they've had lunch, they've gone to lunch and, and they've done different things and the way. And it's really in the past, historically, it's been kind of a touch, a touch in, just like what you guys are talking about. So this may need some further work and potentially we hear from Mayor Pro Tem and Counselor Bateen. I'm open on this one.
Oh, yeah, I, I, you know, having been, had the opportunity to join in these city manager meetings over the course of a better part of this year, you know, they're a little bit overblown in terms of what, and, and in terms of what actually happens in those meetings. And I think it is exactly the kind of information the Counselor Nosworthy was talking about. Well, it, it, it was the mayor's opportunity to get some information on a number of topics. And so it's just that kind of clear communication. There's no grand agenda around the agenda, you know, the, the, the city manager sets the agenda. All we do is say, is that sufficient? We would like to, we would like to talk about something else. We need to get into this. When is that coming up? So I certainly don't want, if I were to be mayor, to think that there was anything subversive, clandestine or otherwise not available to all members of my council, clearly.
Dean, I think that, to clarify, the city manager does not set the agenda. Actually, the mayor sets the agenda and city manager and staff has input or sections into it. So they may create the agenda and the format, but they don't set the agenda. If you go back, I think, and look at the charter, that the mayor has that responsibility, I believe.
We do that actually, you know, in open session. We, we, we try to do that in open session, just to clarify for, for, for everyone that, you know, I mean, we, we always review the, the process, as we all know, but just for the record here and for the community to know, the process is in our study session prior to a city council meeting, we're all delivered an agenda. We review that agenda and we talk about it collectively as a city council team. And so again, in the past, the mayor's meetings have been very different. I was trying to be amenable here and I wasn't criticizing you, Counselor Baxter, for bringing it up. I was trying to be responsive to your concern and your request for information and to provide that. And, and I, I don't know if that is always going to be appropriate. And there's, people, and I'm not sure, you know, it, to be fair, that that should, you know, I, I guess actually in some ways I would even question myself in putting it in there. I was trying to be responsive, honestly, Counselor Baxter, to you. But honestly, I think every mayor is different and I.
Well, then let's just take it out.
Okay, I'm fine with that. Let's take it out then. Councillors?
Thank you.
Everybody, okay.
But, but Melissa, let me say my thanks. I appreciate the updates, particularly on the policy issues. It's very helpful, those bullets. So I appreciate you trying to be amenable. I agree with just taking it out, but I did want to thank you.
Thank you.
So, so we agree that the city, the mayor does not have to create any minutes of the meeting, of the city manager mayor meeting.
That's right. We're taking it out.
If that's, if that's the, I want to make sure that that's a consensus.
I think I would like to suggest that there might be some language around, you know, it's hard to define, but language around discussions that, you know, any, if there's a language, if there's discussion with the city manager that involves, you know, something about future directions or decisions that we might need to make, the mayor may, you know, should maybe try to make an effort to keep them informed. I don't think it needs to be a requirement, but I do believe it's a responsibility of the mayor to keep the rest of city council informed of important discussions, which may be at a mayor's meeting or maybe at a policy group meeting on an emergency, something to that effect. So I think there might be some language around, you know, the mayor's role in, in keeping everybody informed.
I would suggest that the mayor is, runs meetings and, and is one of five decision-makers on a council and simply runs the meetings and other than that has no other reason to be, have a relationship with the city manager more than anybody else. So I would say if exactly what you're requesting is if it's important for the mayor to respond in that fashion, it's important for any one of five city councils to, I guess I'll just quit till everybody's. I guess I'll just quit till everybody's just engaged here for a moment and then reengage. Okay, I'll continue. The, the, you know, there's no, no more importance to the mayor than any of us when we talk to the city manager. So if any of us are gonna talk to the city manager, there needs to be commentary, minutes and distribution of those, what, what happened in that meeting? That's, that's, it's, it's one size fits all in this, for number thirteen here. This is the way it is.
I'm good, I'm good with removing it, I'm really sorry I put it in. Maybe we just take this one out and let's move on to number fourteen, the press. Okay, so we're gonna remove thirteen, I think we're good with that. All right, so with fourteen, it's kind of, it's how we communicate with the press. We've had some, some, not disagreement, but with just some, not conflict, but just some disappointment around that. And so I think we wanted to just clarify here how that, what, what that looks like and to keep each other in the loop and to keep each other informed. I think that, let's talk about the red in this, if someone wants to start. Go ahead, Counselor Bateen.
Well, I did add the last sentence. I mean, it's, it, you know, makes this overly lengthy probably, but I wish, I think we all recognize that. But if we're gonna have a paragraph in here relative to this, I think, you know, it's not within our control how we're reported. And I think we've all been aware of that throughout our time. And so, you know, I think it, it would behoove us to address it specifically with the council and allow that person to have a chance to, to explain, you know, perhaps if there was a misquote or something taken out of context, they could have a chance to talk about that. That's, that's why I added that.
I would support that, Chris, but I would actually write it from the other direction. Because there's no way for city council as a whole to know that a city councillor was misquoted. Only the city councillor would know they were misquoted. So maybe the idea should be that if you feel that you were misquoted, you let council know. Because other, how do we know otherwise? Yeah, okay, great. And the other aspect for me is, Melissa, you mentioned that this was about dealing with the media, but then there's a insert in there about individual circulation groups and that's not the media.
I'm not sure who added that, but I think I would suggest that, and I'm just taking a note, I'm sorry. I think that that is in, I think, again, it's an attempt to be fair. And when council members are being interviewed by the media, press or paper, or are submitting an article on their own behalf or on behalf of council to media or individual circulation groups. And Kim, I think obviously that has to do with your newsletter. And so people, council is saying that, I think we wanna be informed of what that communication might be to your people, if, if that's amenable to you and something that you would consider, since you're distributing that to a pretty large number of people, including the press.
So actually, I don't distribute it to the press anymore because the press member who requested to be put on the list no longer works for the paper. So, but to clarify, a suggestion that Counselor Bateen had made, which was that none of the city council or the city manager was on my distribution list, that is not the case. The mayor is, Mayor Yusef is on my list. Counselor Noseworthy is on the list and interim city manager Amber Blake is on the list because all three of them asked. And then as I also mentioned to Counselor Bateen about this, is that any member of the public can read my newsletters on my website at any time, as well as in all my LinkedIn pages and my Facebook page. I'll also reference my website for the, anyone who wants to look at my letters can. There's, I am not withholding it from anyone. And additionally, I have the right as a city councillor to communicate with my constituents whenever and however I please, as long as I am clear on the difference between city council's positions and my personal position or my position as an individual city councillor.
And this is good that you bring this up. Okay, Counselor Bateen, cuz I, I have, I have a thought I wanna share as well, a couple.
Yeah, do you mind?
Go ahead.
Well, I was just kidding briefly, I just wanted to be clear. I, this was not my edit, I didn't add this individual circulation groups to this one. And just cuz it was alluded that I may have had something to do with that one. But I think the intent, obviously, is for any of us communicating with larger groups of folks, whether they're media or otherwise, that, you know, same, same rules apply.
Well, I don't agree with that because this is my civil liberties and my freedom of speech to speak with my constituents. That's what Senator Bennett does, that's what everybody in the world does who is in government. And I'm not going to be restricted from having conversations with the constituents. There's nothing illegal about it, there's nothing immoral about it, there's nothing unethical about it.
Hundred percent.
Chris, could I clarify to, for a minute?
I just wanna say one thing. You're a hundred percent correct, you have absolute right to communicate with your constituents and, and, and we're glad that you do. This is to, meant to, again, set an environment around kind of how we agree together. And it's, there's no language in here that suggests that council's trying to limit how you communicate or to whom you communicate to. The language is to, that, you know, when, when you're able, council members should do their best to inform the rest of council, to keep us informed. The issue is that we talk, you know, we make decisions as a group and your communication maybe, or let's just say, I mean, I love to write. What if I start my own, my blog, my, you know, backup? And, you know, ideally, in that situation, I would share that communication with council. And if I'm in a situation where I'm, you know, it's, that's what the request is here, which is just keep council informed of, of, of newsletters you might be sending out. And the reason why too is that, as a, as a group here, what we're trying to talk about is the fact that we're trying to work collaboratively and productively as a team and to set that framework. So if you, if there's counselors, it's nice to keep council informed and, and for counselors to be informed, especially in a situation where a counselor might be saying, you know, if, if you aren't, if, if, if I'm taking a stance that's not in, in a lot, in congruence with how council moved and I'm clarifying that, it's, it's nice for me to share that with the rest, rest of council so that they're informed and they, they're very well aware of, of communication I'm, I'm doing. It's a function of just.
Well, if, if your senators and your congressmen work that way with other senators and representatives, then I might see it as a, as a way that government people are supposed to work or that do work. And I don't see that happening. You already have full access to any of my newsletters, so I don't even know why we're having this conversation.
Could I jump in?
Having a conversation concerned to council? Yes, Counselor Noseworthy.
So, so I have no concern with newsletters or, or sending it out. I think it's your responsibility or your right to communicate. I can, I do get concerned about reach. So, you know, I'm only concerned about interactions with the media. So we all have, you know, if we have a Facebook page, we all know that we wear our councillor hat all the time. Does this then mean that if we're gonna post something on Facebook, we need to be certain that everybody else is aware? I mean, I, I'm concerned about it. My only issue here is dealing with the media, you know? I think if we limit it to that, then, you know, again, you're working from principles of respect and keeping in, understanding intent, but you start going with a newsletter, then is it what you post on your Facebook page? And I, I just don't wanna overreach.
So, you know, this is all how we work together. And so if, you know, it's good that we're agreeing that we don't wanna share communication or, or that, you know, we don't wanna take the time to share that with council. If a newsletter goes out, if I decide to write again, you guys are gonna have to find it or, or not. Or maybe if someone asks, I, I appreciate that since I asked, I'm included. And I appreciate that, Counselor Baxter, and I thank you for that. And so I think we agree to disagree that there's a different level that some councillors, that maybe we remove that or individual circulation groups and leave the rest. Okay? That sounds good for me.
And the caveat that we're gonna turn that sentence around, that if the person speaking thinks they were misquoted, or the person quoted in the paper, in whatever media format, thinks he or she was misquoted, they'll reach out and say, this is what I said.
You know what, as someone who's been quoted in the paper a lot over the past year, I have, I would, I don't think I will be anymore, that, that, that's gonna transition to the next mayor. But that, that would be, I, I, I would have struggled with that, to have to respond to every single article. Sometimes there was multiple in one day, to have to clarify what I said and how I said it. If a councillor had a, it would be preferable to me, it would have been preferable to me in that situation, that if a councillor had an issue that I, and I had situations in which that occurred and that, and council reached out to me specifically and I responded, you know, and had communication with that councillor in that manner. It is just would be, I think it might be difficult for the next face of council to have to be responsible to say, you know, to confirm whether the quote was accurate and what exactly they said. Some of those conversations are, are, can be long conversations and difficult to try to transcribe by notes, if you're having a half an hour long conversation with the reporter. So I just.
I get that, Melissa, I support that. But on the other hand, it's just easy to say, hey, guys, this was way off base, I got misquoted. I don't think you have to explain everything, but just a word as to the fact that something was published that you didn't intend or that you didn't say.
It might always, it's not always just that, though, that's the difficulty of this situation. Sometimes it's taken out of context. It's really difficult. And so, I mean, I'm, like I said, I'm, I think I'm out of the limelight. This is up to, you, you guys might be in that situation much more than me. And so I'm just, I'm just knowing where I would have stood on this the past year. Yes, Counselor Bateen?
Yeah, I just, I kind of agree with you, Mayor. I just think that, you know, for the most recent example, where I think that this may have even been, you know, created from, I, I think that was a case where I was in the paper. And even though, you know, the intent of what got printed was certainly not what was expressed and the council's opinion was never expressed in that interview, the outcome of the article was okay with me because, you know, the message got out. And, you know, if you spent all of your time nitpicking the paper or other media sources, I do agree with you, Mayor, it could be a lot. And so, but I think we can give each other a little leeway. That was the intent of the, of the edit, is to just like communicate a little bit about it and make sure that before we brought it up in a public setting, that we'd had an opportunity to say, did you get misquoted or do you feel like you did if there was an accusation there?
Sure, so let's just take the red out and leave the black.
Works with me, so it worked with you guys? Okay.
Sure.
Okay, that's easy. Um, then I think.
I'm sorry, and are we also, and we, just so I wanna be clear, and we're also taking out order individual circulation groups? We're leaving, we're taking that out as well?
Correct.
Perfect, thank you.
So we've come to the conclusion of this, this is still gonna need some more work. Ooh, I'm happy to take a stab at it. I've been, unless someone else wants to, I'm happy to share the love on this because you get, you, you know, I've taken some criticism on this. So if someone else wants this job, I'm happy to pass it along.
I would, I would suggest you do that. Mayor Yusef, you've done, I, I think, a great job so far. I think with, from a legal standpoint, if, if it's consensus to have Dirk do a final review of it, I think that might be appropriate. And then how do we enact this particular document? Do we bring it back in two weeks to a regular city council meeting? Or do we have, expect that we might be able to look at a revised draft next week at study session?
Realizing that there are some sessions, I'm sorry, realizing that there are some sections that don't have a hundred percent approval.
That's why I was. I think there were two sections that we, you agreed to circle back to. That's nine and five. Those are my notes, I've been trying to take careful notes here, but I think nine and five were.
And eleven, yeah.
Personally, I just, as, in my position as a city councillor, I think that the time that we're spending on this particular topic could be better spent later in the year and would be better spent now on things that pertain to the financial situation that we will be and are facing as a city. I think we've spent, what, two hours now on talking about this? We spent an hour last week in a study session? That's three hours of time we could be spending discussing how we're going to bring economic vitality back to our community, how we're gonna help our constituents and what we're actually going to be doing to deal with this pandemic situation. So personally, I don't see the urgency in this. And just like, I don't know why this one came forward out of all the other topics on our study, on our council retreat, it doesn't make any sense to me. I wasn't asked which ones I would prioritize. I don't know if anybody else on council was, but without that conversation among council, I'm not certain how this one got prioritized. And I believe that we could do this months from now, we could do it in July at our retreat. So I would rather focus on the things that we actually need to be doing as a council in this, in the circumstances we're facing today.
Thank you, Counselor Baxter, that's very telling. I think we need to do this in habit, for, including the items that have been deleted for consideration and for further consideration and put that on the next regularly scheduled council meeting.
That's very telling also, Dean.
Counselor Back, Noseworthy?
Sure, I'll jump in. I think that we've had a really good civil, respectful conversation. And I think the conversation also helps us come to a consensus around many of the ways of working. And I'd like to take that win, that we've had a good conversation. We agree on quite a few things. And I'd like to move on because I think focusing on the things we don't agree on is not gonna be productive. And I think we've got probably ninety percent agreement and that's a good thing. So why not just in the spirit of, this is how we're gonna work, it doesn't necessarily have to be codified, but we've had the discussion. Cuz I do believe there are more important things we have to focus on. Dean, to your point, I, I guess, I mean, my point is that I think we've done this work. I think we've done, I think we've reached probably maybe as far as we're gonna get for a while. And that's a good thing. Thank you, and thank you, Melissa, for leading the discussion and for trying to consolidate this. I think that's very useful, thank you.
I appreciate that approach, Counselor Noseworthy, thank you very much. Counselor Bateen, yeah?
Yeah, I just, I'm ready to ratify it, I think it was a, a great discussion and I agree with Counselor Noseworthy. This is fundamental to our ability to get things done, so it has to be something we can agree on. I think it's, it's core to all the next steps and even dealing with economic recovery and all those things. If we can get these things done, then that makes that process go from there. So grateful for the discussion and I do think she's right, Counselor Noseworthy was right. We got ninety percent there, great job, thank you guys.
Excellent, I will just conclude then that I think I agree with you guys and thank you for, thank you for taking the time. I do consider it really, really good work, really important work, I don't underestimate it at all. I think talking about how we're gonna work together as a team this coming year is important to, to recognize and understand before, as, as we go through this transition. And we do have really important work ahead, really a lot of work ahead. So it's nice to get some of this clarified cuz it has been a, a, a source of conflict for our council that would be nice to put behind us if we could in an, in an agreeable fashion. So I would recommend that we continue, I, I would appreciate the opportunity to work with Dirk on this. Dirk, I have some notes, I could kind of clarify it, some of those notes that I've taken with you and, and you've, you've heard the conversation as well, of course, it's recorded as well, but maybe we can go through it together and see if you could, with your professionalism, kind of help us clean it up for a future meeting and just close it up.
Well, we have a consensus that we will clean up the items we have agreement on and for now, agree to leave out five and nine for perhaps future discussion at the retreat? Is that, do we have a nodding heads on that or, okay?
Yep, works for me. We've made good progress, and I'm not going to underestimate it. So I'm happy with where we are, thank you.
Uh, did we leave in eleven? Or did, uh, I indicated that Kim didn't agree with that, but, uh, I don't know if it officially got ta, taken out or not. Item, uh, item eleven.
We commented that it needed a bit of, uh, reworking.
Right, so I think we'll, if we can't rework it, we'll, again, I think the idea would be, if we can get to 90%, there may be two or three things that have to be discussed later, we'll treat it as a win. So eleven, I think, is one of those. I, I said two, but actually I think Dean is right, there were actually three things that were in agreement on.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Good work, council team. I don't care what anyone says, I think that this is very valuable time. I'm not talking about you councillor Baxter, I'm talking about our community. This is time well spent. We work as a team. We work, you know, we want to get to a point where we can set the framework where we work really well together. And this was, this was our best attempt, given our virtual world for a while, um, and our inability to have a retreat until July. So thank you guys for taking the time. I think it was really, really worthwhile, and I appreciate it very much. And with that, we will move on. And we're at section 12.3, which is a very exciting time in the life of Durango City Council, which is the election of a new mayor. And, uh, I am, uh, I'm not sure how we want to handle this. Do we want, do I want to entertain a motion from council and then have discussion? Or we would like to have some discussion first? This is an important time. I think there may be some questions from councillors, so I'm, I'm willing to entertain them. Perhaps, maybe we should do that before we have a, a motion. And I think, I know-
Well, since I'm the one who sent in the questions, I think, I think it's important for us and for the public to have an understanding of how people view their role. You know, because I think everyone has a different view of what he or she brings to it. So, but I want to start Melissa by just thanking you. I want to thank you for your role as mayor, and, um, I thought your letter to the opinion piece covered a, a lot that was accomplished this past year. So I do appreciate it. But I also have questions, because I want, you know, I just, for all of us to have a, an understanding of what can and cannot be achieved. So I, I want to start by, you, Melissa, made a huge point to send thoughtful, respectful notes to almost every person who wrote to us. And, um, you also held office hours, and you helped institute the first civility pledge. And so my question of, of Mayor Pro Tim Brokey is, how does he envision, how do you envision, how do you plan to respond to the high volume? If, I mean, because it's a high volume we receive. How do you see, and I have a couple of questions. So this is the first group around accessibility and responsi, responsiveness to the community. So how do you plan to respond to the high volume of correspondence we receive? To engage with the constituents who are, are interested in a one-on-one time with the mayor? And to continue the council's commitment to civility first?
Dean, you're, you're not on.
Thank you for that reminder. You know, first thing, the, the mayor is, uh, largely a figurehead, you know, quite honestly. Should have no more, uh, uh, weight on council than any other person. So in terms of, uh, it has become, based on the, the amount of influx of correspondence that we've had over the past year for a variety of topics, a lot more burdensome to answer those emails. Certainly, it's my turn, if that was, if I become mayor. I intend to answer those emails in the similar fashion that Mayor Youssef has answered those, those emails. That said, there are also a number of those emails that, uh, should be referred to staff. That, you know, the council is, we've opened ourselves up, in, in full transparency to any, we've become the complaint department for the city of Durango, we've become a number of things. We've also become, uh, has to be given, uh, certain people, uh, voices that, uh, beyond their, uh, particular, you know, that, that maybe they should not have been given, uh, as a consensus of council. So with that, you know, I intend to respond accordingly, appropriately, and, uh, to the best of my ability. And anybody else that wants to ask, answer emails like we have in the past, if there's a particular topic that one of us is more focused on, that person can answer that constituent in the best way they can. Relative to accessibility, uh, I will have a mayor's hour, uh, or a mayor's once-a-week discussion. As has been pointed out earlier, all of our numbers are in the Herald every day, every week. Anybody can contact us any hour of the day, any time of the, any time of the year. So communications has never been a problem in my last term as mayor. I can, I can, uh, communicated with everybody from, uh, members of staff to Congress. So I don't think my communication skills are lacking, or my desire to participate in any, any opportunity to inform the public or listen to the public. My job is to listen, just like all four of us, or all five of us need to be listeners primarily, and communicators secondary. I hope that helps.
We'll keep that going. Did I miss that? Did I miss your answer on civility first? I'm sorry, Dean.
Oh, civility first. I was, uh, one of the initial members of signing on to civility first. I've, uh, stopped talking occasionally when I felt that, uh, the need to restrain my comments. But it's, it's all five of us need to be civil, and, and citizens have a responsibility to be civil to city council as well. Respectful, we have mutual respect, that's one of the major tenets of civility first. And I don't think I have any issues with, uh, supporting the concept of civility first for the city of Durango.
Great, thank you. So my, my next issue is, and my next question is around, um, continuous improvement. And so, you know, I recognize that you're the longest-serving councillor, and you have a valuable historical perspective that you bring to all of council. And I also recognize that as the newest elected officials, councillor Baxter and I, we've questioned, you know, I, like I said, I'll, I'll submit my questions and get them in advance. We, we have questions, and, and we've questioned some of the city's historical practices and promoted, and promoted continuous improvement. Especially in areas where maybe the city wasn't employing the best practices, and in other areas. And I, my question is, how do you see, um, in, how do you envision maintaining that welcoming commitment to a culture of, of continuous improvement? Recognizing that it's not a criticism of past efforts, but an effort to really just keep being better?
Yeah, I'd support council's efforts, uh, to, uh, for continuous improvements. I mean, what's not to be said about that, I've never been against any improvements. For, and certainly the city of Durango is what it is because of continuous evolution of, uh, of our city, of the thoughts of past city councils forever have brought it. There's a reason that we aren't the economy that's, we can witness 60 miles east or west of our community. There's a reason that we have a high level of public engagement in our community. There's a reason we are Durango, and that is because, uh, we've had continuous leadership by city council, including myself, over the past seven years. And that will continue to be fostered and endorsed, uh, as we move forward.
Thank you. So, so my final question is, you know, um, you, like, like several other councillors, and I appreciate it. You run a business, you have a family, and you serve on city council. And from what I've watched with the Mayor Youssef, it looks like being mayor adds many more hours beyond the hours that each city council member puts in. And so I think you have a sense that, you know, we're all willing to pitch in in, uh, in areas that can, where we can be helpful. I guess I, my question is, how do you envision using the skills and expertise of the Mayor Pro Tim to help you in your role as mayor?
The Mayor Pro Tim is, uh, you know, just as, as I mentioned about the mayor, we're all equal in this endeavor, to, to lead, to provide leadership for the city of Durango. In, in that effort, uh, the, the current, uh, you know, I'm, I'm looking for an individual that is, uh, does not micromanage our staff, understands the role of, of the mayor and the Mayor Pro Tim. We'll look forward to, uh, a good working relationship with all five members of council, as well as the mayor. And, uh, I would look forward to the special skills that all five of us have and implement that. And I would ask the Mayor Pro Tim to step in in those situations as is appropriate when the mayor can't, uh, attend a meeting, or is otherwise unavailable.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. And unless we have further questions from council, I did want to say a few parting words before we elect a new mayor, so maybe this is a good time, what do you guys think? Yes, okay. Because I wasn't quite sure, of course, we don't have it on the agenda, so I, I won't take too much time. But I just did want to say thank you to my council team. It's been a big year, a lot of, we've accomplished a lot. And, um, you know, as I, as I get ready to pass the gavel, I do it kind of with a mixed bags, a bag of emotions. I mean, it's been, we've really had some ups and downs. And I won't go, I won't go through them, because I think that they've been, thanks to the Durango Herald, they've done a really great job of, of, you know, I, I, I wrote my letter, we talked about it in my editorial, and then they had a very nice letter today. And so, um, I don't think I, I want to reiterate it, but I will suggest that it was challenging and some stuff that, some issues that, and hurdles that we faced as a city council and, and as a community that we would have never anticipated. And, and I really think that we did do good work together. We did accomplish a lot. Continuous improvement on the part of this team has been a continual, a continual focus for the year, which I think is great. I know that will continue. We worked a lot on the, you know, on higher levels of transparency and civility, and I really think we made good progress on that. And there's going to be a lot of room for continued improvement as we proceed forth. I wanted to suggest that some of the most rewarding part of this job, for me, this past year serving as mayor, honestly, has also been the most difficult, um, which is, and that recent work that we've had as a result of this virus. And, um, seeing our region-wide leadership team come together and work collaboratively, um, and, and witnessing that and participating in it as a representative of the city has been really a remarkable experience for me. I've been able to see how everyone had just come together and has just united, doing everything they can to protect the health and wellbeing of our community. And as difficult as a situation that, that it has been, it has also really been amazing to witness. And I have an even deeper level of respect for the individual leaders in our community as I've seen them come together and work so well in a united fashion. I also want to suggest that, um, really truly the most enjoyable part of my, of my job this past year in serving as, as mayor has been the opportunity, um, to work so closely with our interim city manager, Amber Blake. And if, if I was there, I would be standing up and giving her a standing ovation, because she has been the silver lining for our city council and our community this past year, and she's smiling, I'm probably catching her by surprise. But she has been a huge silver, silver lining for her, for, for all of us, and stepping in and providing the leadership during some very difficult, trying times. And assuming that role, we've been very, very fortunate to have her in place. Um, and I feel very fortunate to have had the opportunity to work side by side with Amber. And, um, I think it was really productive relationship that we had. We each really understood each other's roles, um, very well with the city council, you know, providing the higher-level directives and, um, policymaking, and, and staff implementing management on a day-to-day basis and running the city. It worked really well, provided for a really good, uh, productive working environment. And that was really one of the reasons why I was so, um, in favor of doing the work that we did as a council team today, is setting that framework for really good work to be done. Because I saw it firsthand, um, in the, in this past year, working so closely with Amber, and I feel very fortunate to have that experience. So before I move on, I want to give Amber a round of applause, please. I would do a standing ovation if I could, but it's really been a pleasure working with Amber. And in that same regard, I want to say that it's been also a real big pleasure and an honor to work directly and so closely with our, um, some of our direct reports, our staff members, Kevin Hall, Dirk Nelson, Karen Pease, and Amy Phillips. These are the people that we work really closely with as the council team. Um, and it's just an honor and a privilege to get to, to work with them closely, as well as some of our, um, more removed reports that don't report to council, but you get to know much better. Our department heads, our chief of police, Bob Bramer, our judge Jim Casey, and all of our staff who work for the city of Durango. Truly, for me, in this past year in serving as mayor, I feel like it's been just a gift to be able to get to know, um, some of our employees better, um, and to be working, you know, more closely with them. It's a rare occurrence, you don't get it as much as a councillor, and I just feel like that's been, it'll be something that I missed. And then the opportunity of just working with, um, you know, working for the citizens and the people of Durango. It's something, it's the entire reason why I ran for council three years ago, is to represent fairly, to the best of my ability, the people of Durango. And I've worked hard on doing that. And, um, as I, as I get ready to pass this gavel, I, I really leave very thankful for having the, um, had the opportunity to serve. I feel like I have a much better understanding of the inner workings of our city government, and our community, and our people. And, and I have a, a even higher level of regard for our community and how we come together and unite in times of need, and our ability to survive and thrive in times of crisis. And then, uh, lastly, but absolutely not least, is, uh, it always happens for me, is whenever I have to bring my family into the conversation, I tend to get emotional. I want, I, oof, sorry. My family sure is laughing at me as I speak, but a thank you to my husband, Jim Youssef, and my children, Nathan, Natalie, and Mina, because I couldn't do this without their support. It's been a big year, and, uh, I just really have appreciated it. And you know, as it, as it stands, you know, as we all learn, they too have some very strong opinions about the city and the place that they grew up in, and it's been fun to share that with them this past year, so thank you. With that, I will entertain a motion from council for new mayor.
Thank you Melissa, thank you very much.
Well, maybe we-
Thank you Melissa.
Maybe we can say a few, a couple of other things. Melissa, you know,
Sorry for crying, God, what are you going to do?
Well, you've done a, a really outstanding job. You know, it, it, you came into a little trepidation in welcoming our two new councillors and being a voice of council during this, uh, the departure of our, uh, previous city manager. And I feel like this has been, uh, like your best intentions were interrupted in large part, but we still enjoyed an incredibly productive year. You know, through all, all the tumultuous as it was, you've really guided us through an incredibly awesome year. And I can say that after sev, seven years on council, that, uh, this, uh, this wasn't an easier, but it was a very productive year. Sorry for the way it's turning out right now, that we can't all be together in that room, and, uh,
Great.
High five, but, uh, at an air rate, you, you, you really, you've done an incredible job. And we'll go down as a great mayor in, uh, in the history of Durango, so thank you very much.
Thank you Dean, thank you all.
Yeah, I want to second some of that, for sure. I mean, I think you and, uh, and, uh, your tenure there, it was certainly one of the most challenging it has to be in the history of the city with, uh, losing the city manager, and then going through a financial crisis of sorts, and then going through the loss of a financial director, and a new city manager, and then, uh, you know, pandemic, just a global pandemic to add it on right there, to tack it at the end. I mean, and you've done it with such grace and, um, equanimity, and, and I think, uh, you know, really, uh, your intellectual curiosity has been at the top of your game, uh, over this entire year, and And I know, you know, one of the cool things about being on council that you don't realize is going to be cool is that you're not always going to agree with everybody. And it's going to seem like, some days you and I probably seem like we were the biggest enemies in the room. And, and it's great to realize that over time, you really can gain appreciation for the other person and their, what they're giving to the city. And I think I can honestly say no one's given more than you've given voluntarily and then had to give in addition based on the circumstances. I really appreciate it and want to thank you for what you've done because it was, it was a great mayorship. And you will go down as, as one of history's best mayors, I have to say.
Well, thank you. Thank you again. Just, I mean, we all operate as a team and it's been a big year for all of us. That's why I really wanted to say thank you to you guys and, and to our city staff. I mean, it just, you know, I, I really do feel like we're in a good position as a city. We did really good work in going forward this next year, and it's going to be difficult. I'm, I was reflecting today, and I really feel thankful for where we are and the work that we did do. I think it sets us up for, to be able to deal with what's, what's ahead of us, which we all know is not going to be easy. So, thank you, guys.
Well, with that, I would make a motion that we appoint Dean Brooke, the mayor of Durango.
I will second that. Council discussion. May we have a roll call, please, Mr. Florine?
Absolutely. Mayor Yusef.
Yes, I get to go first. That was fun.
Councillor Bettin.
Yes.
Councillor Baxter?
Yes.
Councillor Brooke?
Yes.
And then councillor Noseworthy?
Yes.
Well, I'm honored. Thank you. Thank you very much. And I appreciate your support all the way around, and we'll make it a good year. You know, we've got so much to do. I started out as my, some thoughts as mayor pro tem that we would have, we would call it vision, or vision 2020. It was with the sort of physical goals that we, that an architect would propose for any community and its growth and its, its vitality and so forth. And so we've got, maybe this is not going to be vision 2020, it's going to be revision 2020 as coming up as the challenges that we face moving into the future. We, I always thought we would continue to resolve our, our city manager, city finance director issues. And I think that we'll, we'll have an opportunity to do that. First and foremost, most, we need to manage the crisis and the shortfalls and evaluate those expenditures, which will be helpful for the recovery of, not only the recovery, but the long run, and not lose our identity, but thrive on our uniqueness as a city. Things I was anticipating really promoting as, during my term as mayor, if it came to this, was putting teeth in the character districts and really defining what those character districts are all about and how they add vitality to the overall scope of development in Durango. Of course, the discussion we've had around the urban renewal authority is going to be first and foremost, and that's still going to be on the agenda, COVID or not. The real crisis that we have on a global level is that of sustainability, which we've made some significant commitments as a community to, to really foster our sustainability commitments. Those will be challenging, but even in the light of financial issues that we will undeniably have during the course of this coming year and years, we need to keep that, those issues in, in, in focus. Development of the Mesa Park, another physical asset that we are, we, as a community can cherish and develop into the future. And continue to strategize how Durango can become back better from this COVID, COVID virus. So hopefully, just like it was in the Gold King spill, the river came, it was orange, it was, it came for a day. It went through, we all thought we were going to die, and we lived through it. And so once we were able to get our hands around what the real impact and the real crisis of that event was, just like the COVID virus, I believe that we have, we are better positioned than most communities to come back from this economically and as a community and with a bigger, better Durango. So thank you.
Excellent. And now, Dean, you take charge.
Yeah, well, thank you. So if I can remember how to do this, I just asked for our next challenges to elect a mayor pro tem. I'd entertain.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that councillor Baxter, that we vote to appoint councillor Baxter as the mayor pro tem. And I'd like to add a, my own personal experience of watching councillor Baxter and mayor Broke interact when we, the three of us served on the strategy and long-term finance kind of working group. We came together over a series of, of weeks to pull together suggestions for all of council. And I found it really interesting to watch the two sometimes come with the same view and expand upon it, and sometimes come with differing views, and then come up together with a better work product. And so I value the time and expertise that councillor Baxter puts into her role as city councillor, and I think will be a wonderful mayor pro tem to serve with mayor Broke.
Any discussion?
Need a second. Need a second.
I'll second that. You need a second now.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we, can we have a roll call?
Absolutely. Councillor Yusef.
Yes.
Councillor Noseworthy?
Yes.
All right, and then councillor Baxter?
Yes.
Councillor Bettin?
Yes.
And mayor Broke?
I'm glad to have unanimous vote for both the mayor and the mayor pro tem and look forward to a wonderful year moving forward. Thanks so much. With that, our next item on the agenda, and I closed my computer a while ago, is.
Dean, before you run off, before you run off, I just want to say thank you to everyone, and that I look forward to working with you. It'll be an interesting and fun time, for sure, and very productive.
Thank you. Thank you for that commitment. I appreciate it. And I believe the next item on the agenda is council reports and actions. Any further discussion or, it's been a long evening.
I can just report that I've been to the bid board meeting and a lot of discussion around how to jumpstart the economy. I want to give a plug for the Share the Love Durango, the online shopping center, and the Feed the Frontlines ways of getting, supporting our restaurants with deliveries to our frontline workers. Went to the multimodal advisory board meeting, main discussion around public hearing on the Camino Crossing. Three people provided feedback, and a lot of the question was around need for access from Rotary Park to the Central Business District and finding a way to direct traffic that way. And then along with councillor Baxter, I went to the reopening planning meeting, and I'll be going to that again this week. And I think that's it for meetings.
Thank you. Chris?
Yeah, I went to the chamber meeting and probably similar, a lot of talk about how to adjust the chamber budget and struggling organizations in the community. Jack Lewellin there has been to every meeting, involved in every single effort to revitalize the community. I want to thank him for everything that he has been involved in because it's been fairly exhaustive. Also wanted to plug the Feed the Frontlines initiative. I'm involved in that. And if you go to local-first.org, you can easily find a place to donate to that effort. It does support the, the local restaurants as well as Feed the Frontline at Mercy, as well as now the fire stations and our health department as well have been added to that list. They've had a great round of fundraising, but still have a very substantial goal to get us through the next many days for those healthcare professionals and all the risks that they're taking out there.
Thank you, Chris.
So I was able to go to the, well, not go to, attend virtually, the natural lands preservation advisory board meeting. And the outcome of that meeting will be several, which we may have already seen but haven't discussed, several recommendations to council on capital project expenditures, as well as the money that's been in the acquisition fund for properties, how we might use that $1.2 million toward Durango, furthering Durango Mesa opportunities. And also, they'll be recommending a trial for e-bikes, the one-year trial take place at Twin Buttes, with all the details of that to be discussed in the future, but those are the three things that, if, if we, we have not discussed them as a council yet, but I know we've seen the documentation, so those will be coming to us. And as councillor Noseworthy said, we did attend the reopening committee, and I am really looking forward to determining what small group I might be working on. Thank you, Amber. So this is, this is a good opportunity to move forward.
Thank you. Well, speaking of e-bikes, the big news for me is I just bought an e-bike. And so now I join the club of a couple of other councillors that I can not race, but I might be able to participate in a, in a ride down the Animus River Trail. A couple of things. I, I did attend the, the airport commission meeting. Similar to what staff is preparing for council, staff, the airport staff prepared a very thorough response to the COVID, to the cutbacks, as you can imagine. We, they're operating on less than 5% of their normal traffic. So the airport is still functioning. That's why we were given a $2.5 million stimulus to maintain operations as an essential service. Other airports aren't as fortunate as we were, but we're in pretty good shape. And, but it depends, just like the city's overall budget, how long and how impactful. So we'll look forward to a continued response from the airport commission. And that leads me to a final, kind of a final statement for the community. The one agenda item I will like to add to the, each, each council's meeting is an update on COVID and what council is doing and what staff is recommending we implement so that our constituents are fully informed on exactly what is coming forward. We do this with the team every Friday. Amber Blake, our interim city manager, myself, mayor Yusef, former mayor Yusef, has, has done an exemplary job of making some comments and reaching out to the community via a video that's produced every Friday. If those need to become more frequent, we will do those in the future. But at minimum, we will have a session of our regular council meeting to address the public relative to that. And as we look forward to reopen, as one member of council, and I'll clarify that, that I believe that our local decisions should be data-driven, not date-specific driven. We should be, our community's done an amazing job at the level of compliance to date and has been resulting in lessening the impact to our medical facilities and staff, as well as maintaining the health and of untold members of our, of our unique town. So we will need to follow the medical data, which I, which will inform our economic response. This event goes, gives us all new meaning to what is essential, and we look forward to solving this problem jointly, all of us. We're all in this together, so thank you very much. And with that, if there's no other business, we will convene this meeting of city council and see you in two weeks. Thanks.